It's 9:02. Call the board supervisor meeting to order. I think Mr. Gaines is going to be a little bit late. Uh, Mr. Brad, can we keep this thing in the case?
Yes. Good morning, God. Gentlemen, Father, we thank you this morning, God, for allowing us to see another day. And, Father, we just ask, oh, God, that you continue to be in our midst, oh, God. Father, we ask, oh, God, that you continue to protect the elected officials of this county, of this city, and this state, oh, God, this country. And, Father, we just ask, oh, God, that as any family members that may have lost any loved ones the past two weeks, oh, God, Father, we ask that you comfort them, oh, God. Father, we continue to pray for this county, pray for our finances, pray for our strength, just pray for new businesses opening up in this county, oh, God. Father, we ask, oh, God, that you may have a county beacon on this side of Mississippi, oh, Father. And, Father, we just pray with togethers, we pray for our first responders, our teachers, our kids, and main classroom, continue to pray to our doctors, our nurses. And, Father, we just ask, oh, God, that you look into our hearts, oh, God, let us keep our mind on you, and let us stay on you. Jesus, now we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please play. Please play the reasons to defy the United States of America, and to the world which stands on a nation, on a God, and invisible, with liberty and justice. All right, I need a motion approved.
Roll call, sir.
Roll call, okay. I just missed one of them. Uh, all right, Mr. Gray.
Yeah.
Ms. Hudson. Warren Gaines been here in a little while. Mr. Milton.
Present.
Peggy Dean.
Present.
Randy Lewis.
Present.
Scott Slower.
Present.
Seth Washington.
Present.
I'm here. Uh, I need a, I need a motion approved minutes. Moved by Ms. Hudson. Second.
Second.
Taken by Mr. Milton. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, I need a motion approved with docket. Moved by Ms. Hudson. Any second.
Second.
Taken by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion carried. Need a motion to approve monthly financial reports for the Adams County Sheriff's Office, the Chancellor of Clerk, and the Purchasing Department. Moved by Ms. Hudson.
Second.
Taken by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion approved. Special presentation, if any. Anybody got special presentation? Moved to county business. James Norman Monroe Sago brought more utilities. Step to podium, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, I'm here, Mr. Phil Norman, should be there. He's president, um, representing Broadmills Utilities, and what we had gotten together to ask would the supervisor, one day, he's not here, but we had talked to him, he was at our meeting, and Mr. Gray was supposed to be there, but he had to tend something, you know, at other meeting. But, uh, we, uh, I'm here by myself, uh, since he's not here, to ask, could we get the county to help us with some hot patches with some of the holes out there? Now, we, when they usually do, uh, with the water, we usually make, uh, some holes. But some of the holes and things out there have been out there for years and years and years. I've been staying out there almost fifty-five years. And, uh, dealing with the water out there, we just, we, we, we just being, that's not how it's fun to do it. So, I'm just here asking for, could they just help us with some hot patches? I'm not asking a hole, like some hole that could be fixed, you know? And, uh, if y'all could do that, I, I, you know, really wish, uh, we will.
We're gonna defer to, okay, first of all, Scotty, you wanna handle this, or Robbie, or can both y'all speak on this?
We got, we got, oh, we got something in place with them, uh, with the utility companies, or the water associations, uh, empty deeds, uh, Miller Gas and all that, when they cut our streets, they have to put 'em back into shape there in, when they make those cuts, and go back and do them, and most of the time when they put 'em, they go back in and they put 16 in them, then they stay there a long period of time, and then that 16 beats out, and we go in and end up having to put a cold patch or something in them to try to help until they can get to where they can put the hot mix in. Uh, I guess it's be left to the board to make that decision, but, you know, if you do it for one, you're gonna end up having to do it for all of them, because they're gonna stop, and other ones are gonna stop. I mean, I just saw Miller this past week, we had some on Greenwood that Miller had cut, and, uh, called Athens Gas, and they're gonna take care of those this week. What they, what they made, they made layers, and they're gonna take care of those. So, we have them all over the county, just depends on what utility company cuts on them, you know, how long we do have something in place, Scott, probably to bring it out, or how long after so many days they shouldn't have to have them fixed back to what it was supposed was when they touched on it. It'd be up to the board to make that decision.
Um, yeah, it, it's all over the city, people are cutting our streets up. They do it in the city, they do it in the county. When they do it, they put the 16 back in, two, three weeks later, sometimes a little longer than that, not much longer than that, they come back and asphalt it over. I mean, if y'all apparently are not doing that in a timely manner, so you, it gets worse.
Well, it's not that we do it in a timely manner, we just asking for some support to help us until we get things going, because we have two boards, two, two people, and we're trying to get, get it up and running like it's supposed to, so we don't have the money to do it right now. So, we, I'm here to ask the board, would they just help us until we kind of get up on our feet a little bit, and then we could be able to do it outside, you know, if it happens again? But right now, if you drive out there, I mean, it, it just bad. Now, these holes, some of them ain't just been there, uh, cut six months to a year, some of them holes been there four or five years.
Now, we don't mind passing potholes, but, but if there, if a road's been cut, uh, I don't know if we can go in there and patch those ones, and I send somebody a bill.
Okay.
So, you got some potholes that have been there for years and years and years, is that correct?
Yes, sir. And the main thing is, we got one there, uh, the street fell in between Country Club and King Circle. It fell in. So, we, uh, tried to fix it, but it wasn't nothing that we dug a hole, the street just, just, just went in.
Water washed it out?
Big one.
The water washed it?
Yeah, the water washed it out, but, uh, we put rocks on top of it to try to keep people's going in. So, you know, when there's, uh, when it rains and a nice day, you know, people say, look, hey, you go ahead and wash it. Look, I, what? Hey, y'all didn't fix that hole around there. So, we here, I'm here today to ask you all, would y'all help us fix it? You know, I mean, I mean, it's bad. If anybody here ever driven out of Broadmills, I'm pretty sure you can see what I'm talking about. We got, it's, it's from this side to this side. The Sheriff's Department can tell you, when you go in there, you, you, you're gonna rock. But if we just had some, something to put across there, some patches or something to go across, it, it would be much better until we get up so we can do it outside.
Robbie, you know which hole it's talking about? Take, is it Culver Bad, or?
Yes, Culver Abundant.
Under our current ordinance, you're supposed to, when you cut into a road, you're supposed to restore it within seven days. And if you don't, it's a misdemeanor, is what it says. But, talking about whether the county can construct on our county road, we obviously can do anything we need to do to keep our road safe and so forth, but it's still a violation of our ordinance. It looks like kind of multifaceted problem.
Robbie, what would it take to get it, uh, dry a little longer? I'm talking about fixing it all up, because obviously somebody's neglected their duties, and now it's falling back on us.
Well, I said, it's not just one, there's several of them, several of them. And that's what I'm texting her now, about how much money's an asphalt budget, just to see, because I know we was about busting her asphalt budget.
Either way, whether we help or not, we still didn't know which roads we're talking about, so forth, and so if you can get a, get a list of them and bring that to the board.
See how big the cuts are.
Also, it's both supervisors, your district attendants, what?
What about just putting 16 in and getting them capped back off 16 till they, till they get some money to put the asphalt on them? Because I really don't think the asphalt is part of what we need to be taking for.
As I said, that's left to the board, but once you start this, it's gonna, it's gonna create a problem, you gonna create a monster.
All right, the only thing I'm thinking about is all these big cars that are getting probably tore up, their tires tore up. Mr. Gray, do you have anything?
I'm, uh, I'm trying to kind of figure out, uh, is it a road that been overlaid and cut, or is it a road that's not overlaid, and where the problem is at? Where is the problem? Have this road already been overlaid? Or have a road been overlaid? No, 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 not that, not that part of it.
Not the part you're talking about, but overall, overall.
Exactly what you're talking about.
I need to ride.
Okay, I'll tell you exactly where it is, Ricky. Come down, Country Club. You know when you turn and go back to Chickenee? Right there on King Circle. Turn off Country Club on to King Circle. And it's right there, right at the stop sign. And then what happened, that pipe was in there, that pipe was rusty, had fell in and everything. So, we. So, Broadmills went in and fixed the pipe? Yeah, we, yeah. And then when you went in and fixed the pipe, you really couldn't afford to fix the street back like it's supposed to be? Right, so we, we put the pipe in, put another pipe in, and then, because, uh, this had came to, if Mr. Gaines was here, maybe, uh, he understood, uh, because he was at the meeting, we explained everything to him, but anyway, we, we tried to fix it. We got a lot of rocks on it. Now, every time it rains, or whatever, except that period of time, it'll drop back down, and people are running over, they're carrying their cars, not carrying them up, but putting little smaller roots on them, because it is just too low to grind. Let me say this, uh, if it's one area, we making sense, but we can't do the whole Broadmills. No, 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 we're asking, we just, wherever you can help us there. We're not happening all over, but it's got holes all over Broadmills, we're not asking that, but if anywhere y'all can help us there, where it be turned at, or someplace else, anyway. I'm, I'm gonna let the road manager go out, but the policy in place is just like when I was with the city. If, if anybody go in and, and, and tear up a road because a pipe or somebody, something like that, they are responsible for fixing it. Now, I understand that Broadmills in a, a, a money crunch, we also in a money crunch. I'm not gonna have a problem helping you with this one site, but we cannot go over the whole Broadmills, I'm gonna tell you why. You got Broadmills, you got Gray River, you got all these other private entities, if we start, and the word get out, that we doing it for Broadmills? Yeah, I understand what you're saying. We don't have to do it for anybody else. We can't have them no week. I understand what you're saying, but if you can help us with that one site, I'm pretty sure, you know. Rob, go out there and see, and, uh, I know what you're talking about, man, and it is pretty bad.
About twenty foot long, we'll take care of that spot if the board gives me approval to do that, I'm gonna get that took care of, and then I'll just do Alton County and City.
It's kind of good, it's kind of good in the inventory of all the things that need to be repaired anyway, because you gotta look at, figure out the plan, get them repaired, and just providing utilities, is, we gotta provide water, and we gotta, we gotta figure out this out, and so, good ideas to get them.
We gotta address all the problem out there.
So, we're gonna let Robbie go take a look at it and see what's the worst of it, and if we need to do a little something to save some people's cars and tires, whatever, we're gonna do that, and, but, uh, it all falls back on y'all, basically.
Yes, sir.
Potholes are one thing, but, but anything's been cut, uh, which is an obvious thing to see, uh, that, that's not our responsibility to have, that belongs to Broadmills Utilities. Okay.
But I just wanted to come ask, so, if Mr. Dollar come out and, you know, let us know, or let me know, you know, what y'all can do, and, you know, I'm pretty sure the neighborhood will appreciate it.
I understand, appreciate that you bringing it to our attention.
Okay, y'all have a blessed day, excuse me.
Did I see Fred Parker? He's hard to get.
Good morning, come on.
Down, all right.
Okay, couple things I need to, uh, Supervisor, um, Angela, had asked about the Healthy Youth, so I wanted to bring these. So, in essence, like I said, the Healthy Youth never went away, it changed some. Now, this is, uh, a handout that every year an open enrollment I have at my table, so that people can see, you know, what's covered. It even has charts where it shows you what's a healthy blood pressure, what's healthy cholesterol levels, et cetera, that's all in here. The primary thing to look, the, the primary piece in here, really, is what's covered at what age for what gender. And doctors know this, but, as I say at open enrollment, it doesn't hurt to bring that copy which has the bullet points of what a doctor can do, be covered under the Healthy Youth. One mistake some doctors make, and I don't know if they're just not, I just can't believe it, they'll do a Healthy Youth visit, code it a Healthy Youth visit, and then do something that's not covered under the Healthy Youth, and at the same visit, which you, you really not supposed to do. But at any rate, uh, Supervisor Hudson, I just wanted you to say that this is still there, it's never gone away, active Affordable Care Act, it changed in a couple spots, but basically, it's the same thing. Now, I had a meeting with, uh, the county administrator, Ms. Washington, last week, and we discussed the time off factors and going to get your wellness, and since then, I've spoken with a few other people, and I've talked to a fellow that's at our open enrollment every year, the cities, and he does, he works in North Mississippi Primary in Clay County, which I'm sure all of you are familiar with, being supervisors. They give an entire day off if you go to get your Healthy Youth, you get a whole day, and their participation is close to a hundred percent.
Ms., Ms., yes, sir. Mr. Attorney. Great, I understand what you're saying, they doing it somewhere else, but that don't make it legal. Is it legal for us to give a whole day off for somebody to go do a Healthy Youth?
We've got sent over to board and, and bred a copy of the Attorney General's opinion that said that you can't do that, as long as it's part of your personnel policy.
Can?
Yes, it's not a donation, it is part of.
And you can give a whole day off?
If you make it part of your personnel policy.
Okay.
So, it's gotta be in a handbook, or?
Has to be, it's a part of your duty, so it's be, just like your administrative lead and every other lead.
President, well, let me ask this question. What is the sick lead called?
What's your sick lead?
They not gonna use that sick lead to go do a Healthy Youth, but if you give them a day off, then they gonna go do the Healthy Youth. They not gonna use the sick lead for that.
You could certainly put it under sick lead, as it qualifies as a sick lead.
Do they have to bring something back?
Right, right. Give it a, uh, um, Ms. Washington and discuss that. There would have to be controls, you'd have to bring something from the doctor back to your department head or HR that says, yes, I, you know, that I want to get the Healthy Youth. And, of course, if they say they do, and we've got the documentation, but if there's a question, that could be checked.
Because they go to a nurse practitioner easily to get a Healthy Youth instead of a doctor, instead of, they're supposed to be in a nurse practitioner and a doctor?
Well, actually, there are some situations where you have to see a Blue Cross Blue Shield, uh, family doctor, internal medicine, you know, I've had people say, well, I went to a after hour clinic to get my Healthy Youth, I'm like, that's not, what? After hour clinics are for emergencies. You need to have a primary care physician that knows all your stuff, has it all in one place, and that can track their numbers, uh, whether the blood pressure measure taken is working, whether your A1C is getting worse, if you're diabetic, et cetera. And, and going into this a little further, I ran a report after we met, and there are counting dependents, there are almost one hundred and seventy people over the age of forty-five on this group, which is mind blowing, and that's , uh, one thing that Jules and myself and Pete Hawkins was from Blue Cross, uh, tried to emphasize, is that on municipal groups, that is quite often the case, because, number one, people forty-five and over tend to show up to, show up to work every day. Uh, you know, we have a, a work ethic, and number two, when you get a job with the county, if somebody's got health insurance and a good, uh, retirement plan, you tend to stick with it. The reason I looked this up, because we were discussing perhaps some financial remuneration, if you got your colonoscopy, you know, get your day off, because it's a Healthy Youth situation, uh, because, you know, there are some things that, when you go get a colonoscopy, you have to go buy that nasty liquid that you drink, and that costs twenty-five bucks or so on your, it's a prescription, that costs you, and that's not probably not covered under the Healthy Youth. But I wanted to point out how many people, there are about a hundred and fifty employees over the age of forty-five. So, if, if you were talking, for instance, let's say, okay, if you go get your colonoscopy, and do it, and we know you're, you know, we're trying to keep you healthy, and we give you the day off, a hundred bucks to cover incidentals, uh, if all one hundred and seventy employees and dependents over the age of forty-five did that, that's seventeen grand. Seventeen grand is rather insignificant if you stop a colon cancer, in terms of cost to the county on the group health plan. However, I didn't want to just go into this willy-nilly and just throw things out here for your discussion, because y'all are good at asking questions, it's your job.
Mr. President, uh, Mr. Fred, I don't have a problem since he says it's legal, but I just want to make sure, uh, if we change our policy, it is clear where baby can understand what the process and the procedures are in doing this, because, like she said, we, we, we don't need you taking the day off and going to a nurse practitioner, and it's, you need to be going to a doctor. Right. So, if, if this what this boy want to do, I don't have a problem with it, because we are self insured, and the more healthy employees we have, it's a win-win for us, but we, we don't want people taking advantage of trying to take a day off and saying that they gonna do a Healthy Youth and don't do it, because it's gonna be consequences.
Sure.
When you do that.
Yes, so, one, a suggestion, why don't I get back with Blue Cross and say, okay, give me the exact grant or someone needs to meet to call it a Healthy Youth, and so, then we can have some controls in place, et cetera, and I will come back to the next board meeting, and hopefully I'll have some answers, and we can go forward with this.
Yeah, that, that sounds good, I mean, we don't have some kind of parameters, and we don't want people to come to, well, I didn't make it yesterday, I was coming to it tomorrow, so I'll have to take another day. Don't want to hear that one, no excuse, we're trying to help you save your lives, if, if, if that's possible.
Right.
Because any day, sometimes, people go to the doctor for no reason, but they find out they got a serious illness, and, uh, then the next thing, we'll get hit bad with the insurance costs, and it, it, maybe it'll save a life, and it'll save us money, and also, so it's, it seems like a win-win, but if y'all please get us those.
I'll, I'll get back to you.
Okay, thank you, Ray.
And you have to, in essence, y'all was really very recent to here, so.
Okay, uh, city government, business, if any. Anybody here for city government, business?
To, to do an application for the fire truck, we needed to amend our ILA simply to say that it's month to month until we have a longer term yield, so my permission to amend it simply to say on a month-to-month basis.
Oh, so you need a motion for that?
You need a motion to amend the ILA to a month-to-month basis.
Basis, yes, sir.
Basis. I'm gonna make a motion to do that. I'm gonna make a motion.
Yes, sir.
Okay, motion by Mr. Gray. Need a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Milton, any discussion?
I got discussions. As of right now, what are we paying the city for fire protection?
It's like eight hundred thousand dollars.
I don't need nobody guessing, I need the exact amount, because I had a conversation with the mayor, and their numbers is way off from our numbers. I need to know what are we paying right now for fire protection, because, uh, we got budget coming up, they got budget coming up, we need to get E-911 and fire protection uncontrolled right now. We, we on two different pages with our letter.
And it's about seven, other than eighty-five thousand?
Yes, I guess, my, 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 he said, oh. Okay, uh, any other discussion?
I ain't got no, no.
Are you, well?
Y'all, y'all didn't, uh, perform enough right now, so y'all prefer, I mean.
Nah, I don't, I, go ahead, they're tipping, you know.
Okay, okay.
My question else, this is a grant that we doing, where we are purchasing a fire truck, or?
No, the city's purchasing it, they're purchasing it under the county's, it's a rural fire protection, and they needed proof that there was, that they provided fire protection, and they wanted the ILA, we're operating under the ILA, because ILA used to specifically say the wrong month-to-month.
Basically, they plan on giving us some kind of credit on the, uh, the fire protection when we, we have to get it worked out. Uh, any more discussion?
That's not the question.
Okay, all in favor?
All.
Motion carries.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Why we on this guy in, in, in the, because we gone, we scheduled meeting with the city about five, and, and E-911 and the swimming pool.
Requested it, and we had one set, and then now we got canceled.
We got canceled because the mayor was on the coast, and when I met with the mayor, the numbers he was coming up with, and I called, uh, Ms. Fells, and we, we had to come up with some more numbers, because them numbers wasn't right. So, once we get the numbers right, and, and then we can have a meeting, and, 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 uh, come to the agreement on something, but can't do that unless the numbers right. And I'm just gonna say this to this board, uh, fire protection is not based off how many calls you make, it was based off the city needed fifteen additional firefighters, and the county somehow paid for it, for fire protection. E-911, when they combined E-911, help me out in that, in the sheriff, uh, the sheriff department had four or five dispatches, and the city had how many?
Ten.
Ten dispatches, so it's not based on how many calls you get from the E-911. They supposed to pay for ten dispatches, and we was paying for five. So, we need to have all that information. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, Ricky, going along that same line of the number of calls going for the fire department, and, and we haven't broken down about how many go to the city and how many go to the county. Well, if you look at the county, further break it down, over half of those were grass fires, and/or vehicles on the side of the road that have caught fire, and which, all you're gonna do is put it out and haul it off, and it's not a real, real emergency situation most times, and, so we can't really, they need to have a grading of the, of the calls, I guess, you know, a five being a house, a fire, and the rest of them, they're just like, like, should be a one, you know, but anyway, so there is a lot of things to talk about in there. Okay, uh, we moving on from there, is anything else?
The number we picked was sixty-eight thousand, we're paying sixty-eight thousand, seventeen dollars and ninety-two cents, or eight hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars a year.
Eight hundred and what?
Eighty-six thousand and seventeen dollars.
Eighty-six, two fifteen, what is it?
Eight hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Eight hundred and.
Eighty-six.
And we own a fire truck, and we're helping them buy another, or giving them another.
Well, they don't, they, they don't work with us.
Okay, uh, any more, uh, city government business? All right, roll that down, the departmental reports, um. All right, down to departmental reports, um, unless there's somebody else here that, that needs to talk. Tanner Wood?
I, I, mine's for the sell and lease of county-owned land, and, but it's gonna be executive session, so.
You, you know, I didn't want to hear that word today.
I know, I didn't. Mine, mine's quick, but it's, that must have been executive session.
But you want to.
Because it's the buy and sell, yeah.
Okay, departmental reports. Anybody that, are you right there, man? Go ahead.
All right. Good morning. Uh, I was listening to what y'all were saying about the fire protection. And I agree with you, you know, because I think we had discussed before, if they get a call out to the county, pretty much it's gonna count against them, regardless of what kind of calling it is, even if it's a false alarm, that counts. It has to be some kind of way where, you know, like Ted, points is, or something like that, anytime they get called out or anything, you know, county gonna lose, you know, they say a certain percentage, but pretty much almost a hundred percent anytime they get called out. So I agree, we need to have some kind of way to help us out, you know, for them being called out to the county.
Well, maybe we can get a rating system sometime, because I saw a couple of fires where, actually somebody had a fifty-five gallon drum, garbage on fire.
Yeah, I mean, if they got called out, uh, on a fire, they would probably, you know, wire that chair. You know, anytime they get called out or stuff like that, you know, it's gonna count against us.
So we got thirty calls, and, and, and only ten of them, or maybe seven of them, or a structured fire, or whatever. I mean, we're, we're getting giddy pretty good for something that's not really an emergency. We do have volunteer firefighters that go, that sit up and go out when, when those fires are called in too.
Yeah, yeah, like you said, that is true, you know, like the only thing for volunteers and cities, they have the stations, and volunteers might have to pass the fire going to it. So that counts, you know, as far as time, yeah, time and fire still running while they pass it, you come from a small fire to a big fire. So I don't know, like I said, it's up to y'all, you know, what you want to do for the fire protection. Now, because somebody brought to my attention, they had an article in the paper about a couple of weeks ago. And kind of disagreed with it a little bit, because one, you know, they were saying about the citizens gonna lose their rating. I talked to the rating bureau, anytime we get ready to do anything, I talked to the rating bureau. And he said that, that citizens not gonna lose their rating. And the reason Kingston, I think, Kingston's a seven because of the water supply. Fox Mall, Lake Montrose, Liberty Road, they had a class nine. And their issue, again, is the water supply. So if the county, as he said, the county breaks away from the city, for the rating, it's not gonna hurt from what they were telling me, the rating bureau was telling me. So, you know, I always say the thing that, you know, we should do something, start our own, that it's gonna hurt them, it's not. You know, because city comes out, they can be critical to firefighters from the city for our rating. You know, they asked for four people there, so if you got two from the city and two fire guys come, it's okay. You know, so the only thing that's hurting us for the county is the water supply.
Okay, so that, those fire ratings are based off of how many fire hydrants are out there in the county, where they're at? And, and, and as most people know, they go out into counties. If you run out of Adams County water, or any kind of water out there, you need to, we're going to water wells in someplace. So there's no supply of water to hook a pump truck to. You have to go to a fire hydrant and get more water if you run out, and move the pump truck.
Well, if the hydrant in the old location, they not supplying the trucks fast enough to get back to the scene. Sometimes hydrants, you know, might take ten minutes. So that's the kind of rating they'll do, they'll come down and they'll put it through, uh, you know, a pump testing, where we have to go from the scene to hydrant and back, and get it doable in so many minutes. So like I said, with those three areas, their hydrants not as strong as the one in Kingston. So that, that problem is there's water supply. You know, they talked about, uh, some years ago about trying to get tanks out in certain, in certain locations so we can supply the trucks and then go fill up and get back. And that, you know, that's on the rating bureau site. And they said they approve of that, but it has to be up to their specs on that. So, you know, I just want to say the thing, you know, if we decide to go out on our own, that it's gonna hurt them for their rating and insurance, you know, but, you know, I don't want them to get scared and, you know, saying, and they, you know, oh, we not, you know, we not gonna have a fire protection. Because, you know, they saying about the house burning down, but hey, I seen a house, a rockaway from the fire port burning down. So it's not, you know, it's all about location, time, call, and contents of the house and all that for, you know, fire, houses burning down and stuff like that. But we even had a call out, uh, Garden City. You didn't even know the house was on fire until you walked inside. And that's about twenty-seven minutes, something like that, about thirty minutes. You got, I was still standing in Garden City.
My fire truck.
Yeah, so, you know, just don't want citizens to be, you know, worried about that. But, uh, I have a meeting tomorrow with the fire port and, and, uh, the fire academy, so you find the rating bureau, they'll be there. I want to talk to them, and, uh, Brad Smith will be up there, so I want to just talk to them about what we're trying to do, if that's okay.
Okay.
Mr. President, I have a question. Uh, since the water supply is that bad on, on this side of town, don't y'all think we need to go and try to pursue the type of water towers?
Is that something we can get a grant for?
They should have called that much shit today. I mean, the last time we looked into it, something had those big old, uh, things that they could have donated to us if we never did.
Now, if I had to be up to the rating bureau's fix, uh, the highest bill.
Well, just check it out while you up there then.
All right. Well, I can just give, just got one call, but that's kind of saying about the storage thing.
Because I think the, the pipes that the water go through is smaller, is that not true?
Yeah.
It's smaller, and you're not getting that much water through them as fast because they smaller.
I have to do thousand gallon tanks.
Yeah, and it has to be fed from the water source, so. All we tell when I explain it, people is like, if you remember that old day train stations where they full of bundles and give them water, something like that.
Depends on what they say we can use, when we first looked into it. Uh, we just, it was very, 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 very.
Plus, they got the fifteen foot off and down, looks like, to, they're just gonna pull up on them and freeloade, talking about dumping.
Yeah, and they want to dump water, have to be, you know, be it back up. But it has to be to their specs on, you know, how it been being done for the county.
I'm thinking, I'm asking Mr. President for him to just check on the specs.
Sure, and, and maybe there are some grants for us, it'd certainly be helpful.
Yeah, I can talk to Brad Smith on that one though.
All right, well, I appreciate that, thanks for the information.
Okay.
All right, who's next? Don't be bashful. He beat you there, Brad. Come on, you're good, you're good.
All right, good morning, the native price purchase clerk for Adams County Water Supervisors. Um, we had our semi-annual bids for the road department on April twenty-fifth. And I would like to go with the results of the bid.
Okay.
Southern cover was the only bid for carbon steel pipe and heavy-duty polyethylene ethylene pipe. So they won the bid on these southern, on the, uh, carbon steel. St. Catholomew ready mix was the only bid for bulk concrete, two percent calcium added to concrete, flow, flowable field, and pea gravel grout, six and a half pound bags.
Is, is it a, uh, amount for?
Southern cover.
It varies on the size of your pipe. You know, if you use a fifteen inch pipe by twenty-four foot, it'd be five dollars a foot. If you use an eighteen inch pipe, it'd be ten dollars a foot. So it varies on the size of the pipe or the cost of the pipe. It's just not a base price of what it costs, you know, size of length of pipe.
I don't think I asked, the reason I asked, because when I go back and read these minutes, and I, I, I just don't see no information in there, then I'm gonna be wondering, oh, how much was it though?
I can give you copies, but it's six pages.
The page? Okay.
You'd like me to do it, like, it's six pages, I can go.
She said she gonna put it in a minute.
Okay.
You'll get it to her, okay.
Okay, um, next we have contractors mix, we had three bids. No, we only had one bid, it was A-PAC, a hundred and five dollars. Specification mix, A-PAC, they only did a hundred and five dollars. Okay, on the tack coat depends on the layout, so I'm gonna go over the, let me, on the laydown. The laydown per job, we have an inch to an inch and a half, fifty to two hundred tons. Um, southern pavement wanted at sixty-one dollars. One inch to two inch, fifty to two hundred tons. We had hand sweep, one at eighty dollars. One and a half inch to two inch, fifty to two hundred. Southern pavement, pavement sixty dollars. One inch to two inch, two hundred to five hundred pounds. Hand sweep at ninety, thirty-nine point five, and only other bid was A-PAC, ninety-six dollars, so hand sweep had it. One to one and a half, two hundred to five hundred tons, only bid was southern pavement, forty-five point five. One and a half inch to two inch, two hundred to five hundred pounds. The only bid was forty-four dollars and fifty cent, southern pavement. One inch to one and a half, over five hundred tons, we had three bids, A-PAC sixty-two, hand sweep thirty-eight point nine, and southern pavement at thirty-nine, hand sweep got it at thirty-eight point nine. One and a half to two inch over five hundred, we had two bids, A-PAC sixty, and southern pavement thirty-eight, southern pavement won that. Okay, the leveling, head overlay, six inch thick, a hundred square feet, a hundred and fifty dollars with A-PAC. They won that bid. One and a half, one to one and a half, one to a half inch. Southern pavement won at sixty dollars. One and a half to two inch, southern pavement won at fifty-four point five. Hatcher head overlay, six inch, one hundred square feet, award a hundred dollars with A-PAC, and they were the only bid. So you will have all of this information, I'll give it to Paige, and she will be able to disperse it to you.
Okay.
Any questions?
Do you have anything else?
That's all I have to give.
And we did, we chose this year to do asphalt, or what you're saying is, look at some of this entail, like each and a half, two inch over five hundred tons, A-PAC's at sixty dollars to lay it down, southern pavement at thirty-eight dollars. So that's, it's a good savings on the laydown cost. Yes. Good, sorry, good savings on the laydown cost, Mr. President.
And, um, I'm sorry, I did forget about the tack coat, tack coat per gallon, that depended on the, um, the.
That depends on who lays the asphalt.
Lays the asphalt.
I shouldn't get to buy the tack coat from whoever lays the asphalt, like southern pavement, four dollars and fifty cents, hand sweep seven dollars, and that's a gallon. And A-PAC's five dollars a gallon, but whoever wanted to bid, that's who you buy the tack coat from, they got the supply.
I need a motion to, seven bids. Agreed by Mr. Gray, second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion?
Remember when we was talking about prices out there, so they came down on the prices?
Laydown cost come down, uh, per, per ton of asphalt, they were the only ones to bid, only hot mix, and these prices are with us buying asphalt, and then these contractors laying it, but we're paying a hundred and five dollars a ton to buy it from their plant, and they're the only ones to bid on it, because I guess the location, we don't have any to other place, but they were the only ones to bid. Now, southern pavements out of Foxworth, Mississippi, they're gonna come down and lay it when we get ready to do, you know, for about half the cost.
Okay, the reason I'm asking these questions is because, um, I guess everybody in the community, I'm not trying to, uh, take no business away from A-PAC, but A-PAC was charging so much to the point where the city and that is here to go outside of this community and got doubled the work almost done paving roads because these people were so high. I, I, what I, what I wanted to see happen was the city and the county go out there and talk to them, and maybe you can negotiate with them and, and come down on the price, because, uh, if we do any, uh, uh, serious overland, uh, I mean, if you can get double the streets from somebody coming from out of town, you'd be crazy to, to get thirty streets done, when you can get sixty done from somebody coming from out of town.
We were paying about a hundred and eighty, uh, in P A, you know, when we done it before. So if you get five hundred tons of overings and half to two inch, like that's what we got done, you'd be a hundred and five plus thirty-eight, so you'd be at a hundred and forty-five, you know, with the tack.
But it was a bit cheap.
Oh, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Any more discussion? All in favor?
All right.
All right. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Brad, for.
Good morning, board, everybody, this is our report. Last board meeting, I asked the board to allow me to go in for our mask notification. I started reaching out because our current vendor has raised the price. Uh, I did reach out to our current vendor, and also to all other vendors, to get a price for Adams County mask notification. And I gave it to the president, board president, having, our current, um, our current, uh, vendor, which is ONSOL, Code Red, uh, they want to go down their prices, so their annual price is twelve-five, twelve thousand five hundred. Uh, that's a yearly, uh, term, and they want us to try to go to a two-year term, which is gonna cost us twenty-five thousand dollars in two years. I reached out to Ray Mobile. Their price, uh, with eighteen thousand individuals is thirty-five hundred dollars.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, Ray, R-A-D-E, for eighteen hundred, their price is thirty-five hundred dollars. That's eighteen thousand residents.
What was the twelve-five for, the same amount, a resident?
All residents.
That's, that's all residents, but I'm, I'm, I'm gonna bring it in, why is that?
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, hyper-reach for the entire county is six thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars a year for the entire county. Now, when we talk about that, back when we got Code Red, a lot of businesses enrolled in Code Red. Those businesses are no longer here. So Code Red is having us with forty-eight thousand followers, we don't have that many people in the county. So they charged us for the forty-eight thousand, that actually run back then, we had the businesses with that. Hyper-reach did, uh, per county, how many residents, according to the local census, and theirs was six thousand, uh, I think it was six thousand nine. Yeah, and, and that covered, same platform, that covers everybody that's in the county with that. Uh, Ray did approximately eighteen thousand, because normally, out of the whole population, everybody don't sign up. That's individual choice, we can't make the way that. So we're looking at that, uh, going back into Code Red, see actually how many people we had signed up actually using? I think we're right at maybe twelve thousand. And, uh, Code Red is charging us for forty-eight. And I talked to them about it, try to come down their prices, you know, I guess they're like the GMC of mask notification. They have a lot of people, so they're not gonna come down the price. And I'm asking the board, we probably need to move on, you know, with their level of risk of getting people signed up, because, you know, continue paying twelve thousand dollars a year, and you only have maybe six, twelve, fourteen thousand people signed up, it's a total loss on that.
Brad, on, on Ray, he said it was, uh, thirty-five hundred dollars, or did you say eighteen thousand?
Yes, that's eighteen, yes.
And we probably won't go that, but, but if we did?
If we go over that, then it, it, it's on there, see the nineteen cent, the nineteen cent is per follower.
Okay.
So it'll, it'll increase if we get more or we get less on that. Ray has gave us a price for the thirty thousand. They, they just, we gonna go and give you a price for the thirty thousand just in case you have it. You know, it's still cheaper than twelve dollars, that's half of what we paying now on that. They, they just, we gonna go and give you a price for the thirty thousand, just in case you have it, you know, it's still cheaper than twelve dollars, that's half of what we paying now, on that.
Uh, and you, you've, uh, you checked these companies out?
Yeah, they, they all have basic platforms on it, it's competitive, you know, just like anything, if you go get a good deal, and, uh, my recommendation is hyperreach, because they're, they can allow us a faster generation of, of getting people signed up, and, uh, it's great deal during hurricane season, because we're not so good weather, that we go and get people signed up to, you know, June, and probably go to fall to get everybody back in on that. They may, Code Red may give up some information on that, but we're not gonna, uh, rely on it, because a lot of those individuals that was Code Red, may not, may long, no longer lives in that county, they wanna get off the system.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Where did they get the forty-eight thousand from?
Because back then, when y'all, when the board first got Code Red, every business in Adams County signed up, so keep in mind, a lot of those businesses are shut down, they moved, so they still have those on the roster.
Forty-eight thousand?
Four and a half.
About thirty thousand.
We said thirty? I don't know, do you hear why they had it?
Take one, take it.
Forty-eight thousand?
That's what they had in Rome.
It's business plus, plus residents.
Plus residents, right.
They, they doubled it up, their business, like, they got out of home and did their business.
Right.
That's doubled up.
They could chug a little, you know, before they die.
Well, I think back then, before I got here, probably had a lot of business here.
How long we had Code Red?
It was when I got here.
It had to be in the seventies, because.
No, 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 it was staying, staying right here.
That was when everything was thriving, because things, businesses been going downhill for a while, so why would you keep being charged for forty-eight?
Because that's the initial rollup, it's hard to try to hook that first thing off the roster.
Yeah, I've been closing the night, or, or midnight. So, the rave is not, you don't recommend it?
Well, it's gonna, it, it's a good system, but she only just did eighteen. If you, if you add, with that charging, the, the three thousand, if you add another eighteen on that, it's pretty much gonna be the same.
Uh, that's, that's the number of silos, if you don't, if we only have twelve, how many right now?
Like twelve, the most.
Uh, if I was getting eighteen thousand, it'd be pretty slim, wouldn't it?
Yeah. So that's why, you know, Ray made hyperreach where she promised the whole county, the goal of what we put in there.
And how many did it come in?
Sixty-nine.
Thirty-five to sixty-nine. All right, uh.
I got another question, Mr. President. Uh. Do we know any other counties that's using it?
Yeah, hyperreach, uh, Whippes County used, uh, I did, uh, I gave them a call, they looked at Code Red, hyperreach, and they worked with hyperreach.
No, 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 I, I'm talking about we get ready to do something, and, and it's kind of new to us, we, we'll contact other counties and see how many other counties is utilizing the same thing that we trying to utilize, uh, I, I, me personally, I don't like being the first doing nothing.
Like, how are you?
I mean, I know you say Whippes County going, but what about, uh, uh, a larger county?
Well, mostly larger counties, they, they didn't have Code Red, they're paying thirty-something thousand dollars.
They, they.
Their population. Well, right, yeah, so eventually, they're gonna get off the top, they're going up, but all your mass notification system, they work the same way. It, it, it's, all of do the same thing, they do, just like we do with Code Red, but it's just, the pricing, it is repetitive.
So, what do y'all do?
Okay, that's another question for, uh, I see with Ray, they're thirty-five hundred, and it's one-time fee of a thousand dollars, I guess for a setup?
Yes.
What, what about on the, uh, on the hyper?
That, that's, that's it.
They don't have a setup?
That's what you pay, that's what you pay to do. They, they, like I said, boy, like I said, you see it on, if you go to a five-year contract, I would do it, but we talking this first year, see how everybody go, they need to go.
This is a one-year contract?
Yes, for one year.
All right, uh. Brad's suggesting was the hyperreach, um, what is the pleasure of the board?
You know, President, before we make a motion, could I ask a question? Is men and women do this?
Yeah, we need to, because our Code Red, they're sending us a bill now for this year, and we need to either pay the twelve.
The whole year?
Yeah, you gotta pay out, yeah, you can't pay by month, you gotta pay the whole year in advance.
So when is the bill due, uh, Ms. Del?
It's right now, for twenty, for this year. The contract ended twenty-eight, twenty-three, so we doing from twenty-four to twenty-five for Code Red. So we have to send them a check of twelve-five, now if we wanna continue to use it.
So when it be done by August?
We don't send them a check?
They gonna cut us off anyway.
Well, they gonna cut us off anyway, that's what I'm saying, so that's why we doing now, we try to go and get it progressed, go and get it started, so, yeah. You better than twelve, twelve thousand five, we do another year and kick this back?
I thought I just seen twelve thousand five hundred on here.
Oh.
Did we have it on there, uh, twelve thousand five hundred?
Look, they, they kicked it back, because the check came back, because they changed, it was grace of God that it happened, that they moved locations, so the check is being sent back to the county, so give us time now to negotiate.
Okay.
It was on here, I thought I saw.
Yeah, it was on there.
Well, well.
Need a motion?
Oh, 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 Mr. President, so, uh, y'all help me out on this, we just approved the document, and if this information don't transfer down there, then we gonna end up sending out twelve thousand five hundred dollars, if we don't stop it right now, because we just.
We, we've already done that, because we mailed the check to the wrong spot, they changed companies, and they hadn't received it, so we find out it's, it was, it's supposed to go to Atlanta, but it's sent to Florida, to their business that closed down, so they called, we already called up to the stock and check council, we have to do it anyway.
We just called our office?
Yeah, we called over, uh, yes.
So, uh, Ms. Del, you know about that?
Oh, no, I don't, she, you check with Shaqie, that's what you did?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is she still here, she was out?
I think she is.
I, I just don't want no mix-up, where it's on the document, and we approve it, and they end up mailing it somewhere else. We need to get that straight.
No, that was my first day, I stopped the check on, I never tried to stop paying it off.
You did a good job, what I'm saying, we still approving it, and if they don't communicate with them, then it's still gonna be sent out again.
We still need to amend that document, because we can't approve something, and don't stop the payment, we got to amend that document.
Okay, Shaqie, we're, we're talking about Code Red, and we sent a check for twelve thousand five hundred, it went to the wrong spot, I guess, and they sent, did they send it back?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have the check, and we didn't send another one out?
We have it, we holding it.
Okay.
We do have the other check.
Should be removed from the document?
Yes.
Was it already on it?
It's on the document.
It would've been on this document, because.
It's on this document, the new one is on this document, but we're holding it.
You, you're, they sent the invoice, you gotta pay the invoice in a year in advance, so they sent the invoice out.
Yeah.
We shouldn't send out any check until after the documents.
That's right.
No, the, the first check was approved.
Yeah.
It was the prior document, went to the wrong address, they never sent the change of address.
Right, tell them the previous one has, it's on.
That was on the previous document, but the new one is on this document.
Okay.
Okay.
But we're holding the check.
Okay, so we need to amend that document.
Yeah, just tell them the whole check on the document, claim whatever it is.
Yeah.
Thank you, motion.
I make a motion.
Need a motion?
Hold that document.
By Angela Hutchins, and second by Mr. Gray, on, on that check to Code Red. Oh, great. All in favor?
I'm all change.
Most of us. It's not Code Red, it's on solve?
Yeah, on solve, okay.
Okay, so.
Now, we need to look, no, no?
Now, we need a motion to, 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 to accept.
Okay.
And you gave the recommendation of high.
Hyperreach.
Hyperreach, yeah, I make a motion to it, hyperreach.
Say.
Motion by Ms. Hutchins, second by Mr. Gray, any more discussion? All in favor?
And that's a one-year contract?
Right. Appreciate the board, that's all, I didn't have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Brad.
Bye.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And it fails with Adams County. Okay, I wanted to give you a count of calls for the whole month of April, and that just PD had one time in eighty, Adams County SO had four fifty-one, that just fire department had twenty-three, with twenty being in the count. Also, uh, they say twenty being in the count, yeah, twenty five calls in the count.
So we had twenty-three calls, and twenty of them is in the count.
Correct.
You have an eight of the calls?
Yeah.
Break down back those calls?
No.
I think that's what we need to do from now on, just, just, because it sounds like we had a huge amount of calls, but we, we'd like to know what they're for.
Okay. All right, I'm requesting a replacement you hired, you have it up there. Is it somebody you replaced?
Okay. Yours is, uh, Ivy West?
Yeah.
Okay. Ivy West, uh, telecommunications, hour rate, twelve dollars an hour, uh, hourly rate, annual rate, twenty-four thousand nine hundred sixty. Need a motion?
One second.
Moved by Mr. Gray, second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carried.
Also, um, requesting to see if I can move forward with putting out the floors, authority of death, sure.
Uh.
I can take with Mr. Johnny, and we have, um, Jake's legacy is there, he's given us some points in the state, and we need to go across, um, try to compare as far as the house, and whatever the castle, they have our food.
Okay.
Mind you, stay.
We need a motion for that?
Yeah.
Move up, Gaines, second by Ms. Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor? All right.
Okay, that's all we have.
Thank you.
Good morning. Joe Bell, Intervention Court, I brought over, uh, an order appointing setting salary, last week from mental health treatment court, for Cassandra Woods.
Where did you sit, did you bring it?
I gave it to, uh, I have a copy of it. Order appointing an in-state psychiatric support staff for mental health treatment center. And the salary will be reimbursable from A R C.
Sandra Woods, sixty-seven thousand dollars plus benefits, signed by Deborah Blackwell.
When you did.
Reimbursement?
Yes, it's reimbursable by A R C.
Is it all cost, the, the FICA and all that as well?
Yes.
Okay, need a motion? Moved by Ms. Hutchins.
Say.
Second by Wes Middleton, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
The second thing is, I, I gave y'all, um, copies of the, uh, financial report that was submitted, uh, it has all but April's, um, next week, just submitted this weekend, so, uh, to this point, everything that we've spent has been reimbursed, a hundred percent.
Certainly appreciate the judge doing that, thank you very much.
All right, we good with everything else, we, we worked on the, I signed for that, okay. All right, thank you.
Judge, did you need that, she approved, right, that she emailed over to me?
Oh, that was on the, uh, did Mary take?
I'm not sure if she, uh, she sent it to me as well, basically, there's an agreement you're supposed to do in terms of the grants, it really literally says, we follow all these federal regulations, which we have to anyway, I need, I need a motion to approve that, that agreement. Yes, ma'am, yes, and Judge sent it to me two weeks ago, so, instead of Mary, she actually sent it to me.
All right, motion for, I'm gonna pull Ricky Gray here, I'm gonna say for what he just said.
What is the motion for? It's for the, the business associate agreement with chess health that we work with.
Yes.
Okay. I need a motion. Moved by Ms. Hutchins, second, second by Mr. Middleton, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carried, we know that Mr. Gaines stepped out. All right, anything else? All right, Joe, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Just want to report, we had a total of one thousand forty-one requests, uh, three hundred and forty-nine of them come through nine-one-one, out of that, two hundred and eighteen transports, we're running roughly thirty-eight percent on your nine-one-one transport, uh, or non-transport rate, the significance of that is it's up by about ten percent from last month, still trying to chase down what's causing that, I think it's a little bit of a repetitive frequent flyer, the calls just won't be checked out, but I didn't have time to, to lock that in before it came, it's just, I, I've noticed a spike in it. Average city response is eight fifty-three for eighty-nine percent, Kami is fourteen fifty-one for ninety percent, uh, these are improved from last month, and they are coming off the heels of us deploying some extra trucks, you'll note, I hired two more paramedics, uh, and I still have a fifteen thousand dollar bonus, sign-on bonus in place for paramedics, one of the paramedics that I was able to get to come into the market is out of Maryland, so that tells you how far away we're recruiting, trying to get the medic spots filled, it's, uh, it's just not many medics out there nationally right now, uh, sixty-three refusals after we got on scene, six no patient founds, we had forty canceled prior to arrival, uh, six site calls, that's an increase, it was forty last month, so we're roughly fifty percent higher, we will see this number, this is the time of year, we will see the site calls go up, as it gets hotter, we will see these increase, I want to commend the sheriff's department and PD, they're doing a very thorough job of getting on those scenes and securing it, we've not had an ambulance crew get assaulted this year, year-to-date, not going to would, uh, that's always a good thing for me, because, you know, that, that, those crews aren't equipped to try to handle that type of a situation. Three plummets straight from the field, uh, and I want to report too, we're doing continued participation with the hospital, those, that, that situation has improved continually since the U C E O come on board, and we continue to work through that in monthly meetings, uh, it is working, uh, we did participate with one of their recent J Co. accreditations for their cardiac, and they were, they were giving a good report on that, that has to show communication between EMS and the hospital, and the auditor commended us on those efforts between the two of us, so, just want to let y'all know, the system is, uh, stable, it's healthy, we're continuing to work out a little bit of nuances and tweak it, y'all have any questions for me?
No, sounds good. All right, sir. Tim Howden with A M R, I, I didn't use you to set.
I would, yes, if anybody didn't know who you were. Tell him.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good morning. I'm Trish Miller, and I was coming to see if we could go ahead and get a group to have the group opening, because by, we're speaking May the twenty-fifth, this is the last Saturday of the month, I'm worried that weekend, I do have everyone's applications, all of our life arts and office staff is coming, because we have two. I do have everyone's applications, all of our life arts and office staff is coming in, it's gonna have two new people. I do have their applications as well. Um, we did get the pool cleaned and everything for the summer, so it's ready now. But we have like one certification to do, and everybody else is certified. The same rates and everything to stay the same.
So everybody is coming back, you said, soon too?
No, everybody's coming back, and we have just two new people.
Okay.
Just like it's alternate, so they can't make it.
Where are we at on the pool, Mr. Slower, as far as, that, the whole working with the city or?
We've asked by anything, we haven't said.
Nah, I can't, I, Mr. President, I'm not gonna, I, I had something to do with, uh, that meeting being canceled, so I'm not gonna, uh, let the mayor be blamed for that, because when we met on the coast, like I said, we was talking about the pool, we was talking about E-nine-one-one, we was talking about five, they had the wrong information. So that's the reason he canceled the meeting, so that's why I'm there.
So we need to get a reset up with the reschedule for that meeting, but we still need to get approved to go ahead and open this pool. We, we still.
Yeah, I mean, if you're gonna.
And go with it what we have right now. So I'm gonna make a motion that we go ahead and open it up on May the twenty-fifth, you say?
Yes, the Memorial Day weekend.
Is it gonna have to be contingent on our meetings with the, uh, city?
Not on the meetings of the city, the city needs to approve it as well, so.
Well, I mean, they can approve it, because we still in a, uh.
Because we've ordered all.
My aisle is.
Our management will reflect it when we accrue this, and we'll move it to them.
Okay, because we still have the aisle.
Okay, the motion was made by Miss Hudson's, second by.
Hey.
Did I get a second?
Yes.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you'll have all that to us?
Yes, I got all my applications, um, for basic games, uh, case that we're going, then I have nothing to add.
Right, Chris, all right, next, hold on.
What method are we gonna use to notify the city, uh, uh, or whatever? But if we can't approve it, and they don't approve it, what happened?
She should be at the city, go to the city and get approved.
Just reading my accent, what is the procedure? So she should go to the city?
I think so.
Yeah.
Okay. The next meeting for the city is the fourteenth. Fourteenth.
I'm sure y'all can put on the agenda. So can you call, who, who are we seeking, because I called a few weeks ago and I didn't get a call.
Nah, it ain't paying.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's name, it's, it's paying, it's paying.
Who's that? The other lady?
So it's still paying a lot?
Paying, okay.
Thank you.
If I was you, don't you have a mayor number?
Yes.
I would, I would call over there, try to get on the agenda, then I also would text the mayor to let him know that you're trying to get on the agenda, where we can open the pool.
Okay, May fourteenth, right?
May fourteenth.
Thank you.
All right, next. Yeah, but that, you'll, you'll do.
I'm just hiring somebody to replace somebody that, uh, I'm hiring Carter Winston, as a full-time probationary juvenile detention officer.
No, fair, I have to pay for her here.
Just replace you.
Jakari Winston. Uh, juvenile detention correction officer, allocate twelve dollars annual rate, twenty-four thousand nine hundred sixty. Need a motion? By Miss Hudson's, second by Mr. Middleton, any discussion? All in favor?
Well, I would.
Thank you, all right. Motion carries.
Thank y'all.
Yes, thank you.
It's me.
Got this celebrity coming up.
Good morning, Loretta, this is Southwest fan. Um, a while back, we, the board approved a resolution to apply for DRA funding for their SIP program, this critical infrastructure fund, um, for Moretown Road, and that was, like I said, that was last term, so it was time to update and renew the resolution for twenty-twenty-four with this new term. That's why I, I just need approval for the resolution to apply.
I know that we approved the resolution to apply for funds for Moretown Road.
Maybe by Mr. Gray, second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion?
Mr. President, uh, do you need engineering work?
I was hoping with Mr. George.
Well, Mr. George, could you, oh, y'all already took it? Okay, thank you.
All in favor? Motion carries.
Hey, do you have the resolution?
With me?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you, that's our Friday. Yeah, it looks like it. Thank you.
Ms. Smith, can you tell me where we are on the, uh, repairs?
Waiting on the whole sector, uh, reporting. I, I have all the contractors' addresses. Um, once I get the report, I was gonna call supervisors, sit down with everyone, let them know the cost.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Before you go, uh, have everybody submitted the two people to get some? Oh, yeah, I have it, yeah.
But we're getting, we're getting close now, huh?
Oh, yes, I'm just waiting.
They're doing inspections, you need to select in number one.
Thank you, that's all.
What? Uh, department heads.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First thing I have, President Wilson should have repaired, uh, seven Oakland Park. And we took some pictures and, uh, probably might be, if they're right there.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay.
I was asking pictures of that for the adjudicated lot.
Okay. Um, we need a motion to, go ahead.
Is this, is this something that, uh, because the lady commented, she said this was something that y'all had previously did before. Call, is it somebody you were talking to that cleaned up? We went before to the pictures, they cleaned up some, the neighbors gonna be able to board fences when it would happen. See the pictures, uh, now that you're back, like I said, it's not over on, it is. A lot of stuff. Yeah, so. I'll make a motion. If we get the homeowner to make it, it'll be a lot better on. Yeah, it would, I think it would too. I don't know, she just commented. Got the same with that, I think. It's the same. So I'm gonna make a motion to.
Send Oakland.
Oakland Park with.
Send Oakland Park.
Okay, I need, need a motion to.
Uh, yeah, Craig, they adjudicated that.
All right, motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Middleton, any more discussion? All in favor?
Next thing I have is, uh, one fifty-one telling, Paul Durk, it's round.
Okay, I'm got it. You want, you got just one?
Yes.
Okay, this Linda Round, okay. Motion by Mr. Gaines.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? All right, motion carries.
Um, it's a letter from President Wilson in front of E. for Greater St. Martin Church, in six gig, when E. rode. They have made, they have some area in the gray, uh, settlements on, where they need someone there, so when the pass was on, so I could have took care of that, first time it's bringing it forward.
Okay, I need a motion.
Hold on a second. Uh, Mr. President?
Gray.
Uh, discussion, I made a motion, okay, what, what is the plan, what are you actually gonna do?
I was gonna do just care of the dirt there, and set it, and then take and put it on the gray, but I don't do that.
Okay, all in favor? All right, motion carries.
Before you, Mr. Wilson, should be a request from DEQ for twelve thousand, I mean, one thousand two hundred fifty-three dollars and four cents.
Got it, correct. I've got two of them, oh. One for, uh, one thousand two hundred fifty-three, and one for three thousand seventy-five. This one seems to be a little over. You wanna put both up on there?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. DEQ, all right, motion by, uh, Mr. Gaines.
Second.
Second by Wes Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor? All right, motion carries.
Mr. Washington, I have a buzzing minute from one sixty-three hundred six thirty-seven to one sixty-three hundred six ninety-one, which I think may have bought a uniform for four hundred eighty dollars.
Motion by Miss Hudson's, second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? All right, motion carries.
That's all I have, I have our executive session.
Okay, I, I need to, um, I, I spoke to Mr. Gaines, we came in, uh, Blackwood Road, Mr. Galler. Uh, what, the report I got, I got two of them, like, two different people. He's not hauling stuff out there, he's hauling stuff in there. And living in a tent.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought it up, so, you know, uh, one of the big questions was when it had the big fire, uh, I was out there, sheriff, I made Robert, it's so much stuff out there, you know, one thing I forgot, what would we do with it? We have, uh, that's what Robert was, uh, saying, I know, uh, sheriffs out there, we asked, they asked for the bulldozer to try to, uh, spread some of it. We couldn't even get a dozer in to push, we had to use the other people's properties to make probably a hundred yard boundary to get around it, so, you know, uh, I guess there's something we need to get with the sheriff and stuff, and, uh, we definitely can, uh, go back with adjudication on it, I support it. But, you know, the other part, will we clean it up? If we clean it up, and I know, I guess something that we can get with the road, like with, what would you start to do with the stuff that we load? To start back up, Mr. Gaines, backing up a step from the last that we've been dealing with. We asked God to put a fence up, God did put a fence up, but he put a, a used board fence, and he went out from somewhere, about like everything running there. Uh, it's not intact like it should be, but he did start putting board fence up to hide or take care of his property. Uh, now that he's done that, and like you said, now we need to move forward, because it is a problem, it's happened to the neighbor. We did have to take the dozer, go through the neighbor's property, they were nice enough, but we protected their property, because when a fire gets to them. So with to get around back, we were trying to get through the back, and it's just gully stood there trying to get across the back, and that dozer, to do it, uh, I, I mean, to, to do it, we just have to take track, I mean, we couldn't sort of do it, we could, I mean, we just have to take track, they were dumb trucks, go out there and just start loading, and hauling, hauling, and whatever he had by loading. But like I said, he's got vehicles there, he's got all kind of things there. Eighteen-wheeled trailers. I, I just, yeah, I don't know what we need to start, but we need to start for us to make, you know, to help the neighborhood.
There's a question.
So, and that, though, you know, we got eighteen-wheeled trailers, you got cars, you got a lot of iron and stuff, so, you know, my question is, when you haul it off, uh, as good to the cake? So, what, what are you gonna do with it when you get it, cuz?
You gotta properly dispose of it. This is my, um, it sounds like there's some other stuff too, like some white, white goods, and tires and things of that nature. I feel like we should, in the very least, contact NEQ, because it sounds like this is improper solid waste. This is really what it is. If we, if you have a plan with NEQ, if we dispose of it, it's gotta be properly disposed of. Of course, we can come back on that property owner. This was done within a year, wasn't it?
Yeah.
The disjudication.
He brought, he brought a guy nuts up to pay for it all, this is.
The statute says that we give them seven days notice, and then we can come back in, it's within that year period.
Okay.
I like to, I like to call NEQ too, they need to be out there, and this is improper, I mean, they basically make.
Do we, is there anything the board can do as far as, he's hauling used appliances in there now, stack them in there every day, bring more and more stuff, so how do we, how do we, can we stop him from bringing anything else?
NEQ is the enforcement agency for improper dumping, and they should be very interested in this, because he's doing this. He doesn't have permit, because he didn't come before the board, ask for, to change our solid waste plan, so, sounds like it's not appropriate at all, they need to learn of it, and at the same time, we, we, under that minute statute.
So, um, is there anything we can do as a board right now to do, or you just gonna call? Or someday's gonna call?
Yes, we can go ahead and get the notice that we, we give them a seven-day notice. If it's within a year, right? If it's within a year, if it's burned, it is, and if it's not within a year, I'll go ahead and.
So.
When you say within a year, are you talking about the last time he was in?
Last year. Last time he was adjudicated, uh, minutes, that date, I don't wanna say it was in October, so I think within that year.
Do we need to look that up?
We definitely.
Let me make, let me make a motion. Let me make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to, uh, have a turn to share him a seven-day notice if we's in, uh, within the year period.
Yeah, I'm putting proper legal notice for the quickest.
Okay.
Because e, e, even if we don't have the seven-day, we're, we're gonna do the FPO old-fashioned, have to start them all over again if it's not.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Gaines, second by Miss Hudson's, any discussion, Sheriff?
Yeah, I do have a question. Uh, Scott, I have to go back and look and see what his status is with us, but I hear NEQ and all that, but if you were able to seize all that, you can sell that stuff for the cleanup of their property, so I guess that's something me and Tim need to talk about on that end. It's a lot of cars, there's a lot of stuff out there, and it's gonna cost the county a lot.
We can get some. No, 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 I, I, I'll figure it out. Mr. President.
Okay.
Okay, here go the kids. Uh, we do have a process in place, but even with cutting grass, the county charged for the equipment and their time.
Right.
So, with, with, y'all saying they got this much stuff out there, and if the county have to go out there and clean it all up, county gotta find a way to get paid, because if you put it on the taxes, the, the land probably ain't even even worth the price that the county gonna put on it. So, how do you do that? You, you get with what the mayor said, I mean, what the, uh, sheriff said, get with the DA or whoever, where if we do go out there, we can utilize the stuff that's out there, and take it somewhere and get our money back, because we don't clean property for free.
Yeah. We put it on the tax roll, ninety-nine percent of the property gets to be our money. So when the tax purchaser will come in and say, oh, that's, you know, fifteen thousand dollars, I'm gonna put it on that, they may buy a bad broker, in case they probably would. So, tax, that's a very effective means, if we get it on our tax rolls, a very effective means to get your money back. We get our money back, because they're tax purchasers, and, and it's such a numbers game, they're not really looking, they're not going individual parcels.
Mr. President, one more thing.
Yes.
That sound good, Scott, but half of the time, when those people are beating, they don't even beat it on the penalty. They don't even beat, they don't even know about the penalty until after they done purchased the property, then all of a sudden they say, oh, well, you know, that probably got fifteen thousand dollar penalty to go with.
Well, I think so, the penalty is something that you should.
Well, it don't work.
Tax process should.
I mean, so we're looking at that five hundred to thousand dollar clean, you know, grass cleanup compared to what this is gonna be, weeks, you know, what I'm saying, our weeks going in cleaning up, it's gonna be several thousand dollars.
Maybe even closer.
Now, now it's supposed to be assessed.
Probably.
So we probably gonna do it, because it'd be worth more with the property.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna have to work the process, though.
Yeah.
That's the only way we can do it, and if, if everything is seized at some point, and then there's some advice, that they can do whatever they want to with it at that point.
If they do make sure.
We got, we got.
Penalty line.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, hold on, uh, before you go.
I hope so.
Uh, I just need you to ride out, cuz I rode out a couple of days ago, I got the same situation in Southview.
Same deal, same.
Yeah, he gone pile and stuff back out there, being old trails and all that kind of stuff, so, we gonna, you know, have to send a guy on Southview, uh, another letter if it's not expired. And to my knowledge, uh, that's the state of Mississippi property.
You're right.
Okay, they need, they need to do something with their property. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes.
Good morning.
Hey, how you doing, morning?
Uh, just some updates and then, uh, two requests. Uh, Merckton Road, the project did advertise, and so we are gonna open up bids on the twenty eighth of this month.
And Tim, where?
At the city building office. All right, uh, for York Road, that was requested flat sheet worksheet, for M dot, we did submit that, that was requested by M dot. Um, still waiting on the right away for Merkton Road. Um, we did survey, we're not, we did, we're in the process of surveying E W P locations and the Scotland Drive location. Um, when we tried to survey, uh, one of the locations, it's Brook Brooklyn Drive, that site is is extremely open, and it's gonna be difficult to survey in traditional way. Uh, so, we're going to look at getting, um, aerial survey like we did, or one of our previous E W Ps, and I'll get a price to you guys.
What what did you do to it?
Uh, Brooklyn Drive that location, Brooklyn.
Brooklyn, okay, it's uh, can't, it's more, you know, it's more the end of the street, Brooklyn and curb, one to the right right there, that E W P site.
Yeah.
I can't think of the grid.
I know, it's almost in.
Yeah.
Always in the curb.
I'm gonna suggest this for these E W P projects, and I know I I could call your office, Robert, cuz I got pictures of a a site that was done. Uh, we need before pitches, we need after pitches, because if if somebody, uh, property, if somebody gonna do, get an E W P project on their property, and these people don't know that you're gonna use their soil, and if you don't get with those people to let them know you gonna use their soil, then I don't think you need to be using their soil, because those people don't understand it, and I'm getting tired of the same results when you get, when when come contractors saying that it's out of their scope of work. That's surprising to me, because the same contractor say the same thing on all these properties that they finished with, i- it is out of the scope of work. So, get the pitches on the front end, and and we need to make sure, uh, whoever approving it, make sure what the scope of work is and what is not in the scope of work. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, and now I'll get to my reimbursement, well, one thing we have is, um, I guess there were some properties or some sites that were submitted to N R C S for E W P assistance. Um, got a letter, um, requesting that we submit a letter officially accepting or requesting those sites, I'm not sure if those sites were, um, not part of that progress, but email was sent to me. Um, so, they need us to submit a letter to them, uh, requesting the assistance for the January twenty-fifth, twenty to twenty-four rain event from N R C S, assistance from N R C S. And I need the board's authorization to allow the president to sign this document, and then this document be placed on the county's letterhead, sent back to me so I can forward it to N R C S.
What's the site?
What's the site?
I I was not a part of that.
Those sites we submitted, I'd get a list to you, the ones we submitted that was on the board in January, we were in Jackson, had all the rain, and we submitted those sites, they didn't approve, but a few of them, so I need to see what sites were approved, and I guess that's what you're asking, what sites approved?
Yeah, so I think somebody blew me down as point of contact for E W P, I'm not, I'm just an engineer, so I'm not official point of contact for, so they sent me.
I didn't get it, he asked me, come on, I said, I see that.
So, would you ask us to?
I guess it's it's just a general letter saying that you guys going to, gonna want the assistance for those sites, so just a letter you can submit to N R C S for the one that was approved on the desk.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hutchins, second by Mr. Gray.
Mr. Chairman.
Any more discussion?
Yes, sir, make sure the county, uh, right, make sure you get, um, the site.
Also, you can also copy those sites to, to decide.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And the last thing is the, um, the reimbursements for, um, I guess the closeout reimbursements for, um, group four E W P. Uh, just need board authorization to allow the president to sign the documents, so the reimbursements can be dispersed to E W P group.
So.
Second.
Uh, voted by Mr. Gaines, second by Ms. Hutchins, any discussion?
Yeah, what is the sites, four sites?
For group four?
Yeah.
That would have been the, uh, I put over.
I'm pulling up. Just clear the heights, lands down, park road.
Whoa, 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 lands down, six?
Liberty Road, Prince Edition, Whitman Road, South Palestine, and West West area land.
Is it six lands down?
Yes, I'm sure it is, I don't know if there's.
And you want me to do what?
We wanna ask it the N R C S to pay us money.
Oh.
Reversals.
Oh.
We're okay with that.
Our money?
Yes, sir.
I'm I'm trying to get.
No, 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 I know what you're doing, but.
Yeah, I'm trying to get.
That's my thing.
That's reading that key back.
Yours has been real good at getting the requests.
All right, we need another motion for that.
How much is that?
Well, this, this last one is three twenty-five nine two one.
All right. Any more discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, motion carries.
And I'll call out on the paper, any questions?
I have some questions. Um, have you ever got a list of anything about the repairs or state aid rolls, or use of some of the state aid money?
All right, so, I sent an email on the twenty-third. And that email, it was like, only had a couple of letters to the, to the estimate, and so I resent the estimate to everyone this morning.
Twenty-third.
I got it for first time.
I got it, but it didn't have anything.
He just had a letter, but somehow the attachment didn't get attached to, so I just sent it more.
You said it at the end this morning?
Yeah.
What was that, two weeks ago?
Yeah, it was like, it didn't, it didn't have.
I was like, read it?
No.
You you read the price?
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't have, mine is.
I didn't see it when he opened it.
I couldn't.
Nobody else got it, no.
I got it. Box is right down front row.
What kind of file you got?
I didn't want to do that. God, mine, the letter, the letter was there, but the pricing and the roads was on there, I seen it this morning.
Yes, here now, about.
I I seen it this morning, it didn't, it didn't come through, I'm gonna ask.
You resented?
Yeah, he resented this morning.
Okay.
I just assumed everyone had gotten it first, first.
No, I didn't work it. That's all, that's all I got.
So, we need prices.
When you sent?
The price is on it, on the, on the one.
On the left?
One of the.
Yeah, but what's the total amount available to us?
It's four point, four point one is the available amount, that either back out twelve percent or in your.
Back out twelve percent from.
Put in your.
Okay.
There's like fourteen million of all of them, with all of them total, so you had to pick out what's there, I read it this morning, but it didn't come through first time, all the letter part came through, but none of the price, can't do it all.
I don't know why.
Yeah, today it got priced, so we'll have to actually look through and figure out what wrong. I think we did, we had a list of, what happened to the list of the roads that you spoke of, and I remember, we had Armin, Low, we had picked out like four roads, you remember that?
Those, those roads are right now finished, they ain't approved.
Oh, okay, that's right. So, we did, so, so what we really need to do for us, for that, we already done submitted some roads, and, uh.
Those was just striped on.
They had the striping on, so we need to see, uh, what was kind of, do you remember the estimate on what that was, if you, if you don't, it's fine, on those, uh, roads we submitted?
Uh, that was three hundred and, that'll be one hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty thousand for those four roads.
A hundred and something thousand for all four?
They're just striped on.
They're striped on, okay, so, I was just trying to make sure when they start picking roads, uh, we didn't add, you know, the roads that had already been there, so we gonna go over budget on and stuff like that.
So, I included just because.
Yeah, I I seen you highlighting, so I just wanted to make sure, so, I think once everybody get chance to go to the board, sit down at the board, and probably pick out what's, you know, and look at what need doing.
Okay, same, we just got that, uh, email, most of it, just all the west, he got that from us, but, uh. Okay, uh, anything else?
Look forward to what looks to approve from that, it's forty-nine, Kings Road, Whitney Road, she just submitted well more after this last rain event, we don't hurt anything from there.
Take your time, now I need this document to get signed, and then I'll email the letter over for your lookings. Thank you all.
Thank you. Debbie, you wanna come up and tell us what you got, I I didn't realize you had something to say.
No problem. Uh, good morning, uh, tomorrow, we are gonna go visit another H I L, this will be in the Poughkeepsie County, we, we will be leaving at nine o'clock. Um, at the sheriff's office, uh, can also give you the address if you wanna go on your own, we're going at nine, getting there a little after ten, and, uh, probably that'll last till fifteen, ten thirty, till eleven thirty. So, that's our next one, we'll probably have another one in a week or two. Anyway, this is newer, it's smaller, but on the same concept of what we saw a couple of weeks ago. Uh, where are we with our agreement with the, uh, plan?
Submitted it to their attorney, and when I told you that I had, I'll can gently follow up with them. So busy, but I'll gently follow up with them.
So, that's where we are with that. Um, we did find out, uh, I think, heaven knows, I don't know if the rest of you knew, that we have, uh, according to David, that we have three different, two studies and a, uh, survey that we don't have on this property, that's gonna cost us fifty thousand dollars to get, um, the company did not have any of this work done, cuz they didn't do anything to the property. So, we need to do that, to move forward, to find out the cost of, uh, the complete cost of the building, and so, that's our, one of our next steps. We also know from, um, uh, Burt, with the group that has thrown some interest our way, that that cost could be, uh, put in with our total cost, um, which wouldn't be for two years afterwards too. So, we could possibly go that way if we use them as our investor, builder, whatever you wanna call it. So, I just wanted to draw those thoughts out to you at this time.
Mr. Jeremy, I I sent you a pic a long ago, so I couldn't remember if I sent it.
Okay.
Burns, Cooley, and Dennis, did anybody check with them and see, they're the only people almost in the state that does the environmental work, if they, if they did it, they'd have a record of it.
Right, I I called everybody, nobody has it.
And this, this group that does that particular work, they'd be the ones doing it this time?
Right.
They, they said they've never been on that property? Okay.
And, uh, actually, we're getting estimates from two, uh, local, um, one of the, the one we have right now is local, but none, no one has ever heard of it. And they didn't think they had anything done either, they weren't sure, but since you're not having, since they didn't do anything with the property, they probably did.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Sheriff, you ready?
Yeah, ready. Morning, morning. I know most, I did a contact with most of you all this weekend, several different things, it hasn't been a bad weekend, but it's been a busy weekend, and I hope you all don't get tired of sending videos of all guys cleaning up their roads. I send those videos intentionally because I know your constituents be complaining, saying that we don't clean up their road, so now I make sure that whenever we hit a road, I don't forget where the district is, I'm gonna send you a video, so you'll know that they out there working, cuz y'all know, just like I know trash is a big issue, and as soon as we clean it up, it's trash right back up, but at least we have evidence that we've been there, and we're trying for sure. So, with the District One bags, fifty-four bags, District Two, ninety-three bags, District Three, hundred and twelve bags, District Four, sixty-two bags, District Five, hundred and six bags, for a total of four hundred and twenty-seven bags, uh, that were picked up, that were picked up from the, uh, the highway, that's in addition to two hundred and sixty bags, two hundred and sixty bags at the sheriff's office itself, hundred and fifty bags from the courthouse, hundred and fifty bags of trash from the courthouse, a lot of trash over there, eleven bags from justice court, and twenty bags from the sanitation department. Thought I threw that in there, so y'all know just how much, how much trash is just accumulated, just in the county alone. Uh, the other thing I have, President Wilson, I believe you have two new hires in front of you, uh, for empty, empty shears.
And I'll start with.
They're actually, actually not in this board.
Okay, you need the ones I got in my hand, I can see that.
That'd be good.
All right.
I can call them out. All right, or you call them out, then I'll, uh.
Yeah, the first one is Sarah Wilson. Empty share sixteen eighty-one an hour, thirty-four thousand nine sixty-four eighty a year. She is inexperienced, and the experienced one is Michelle Martin, seventeen ninety an hour, thirty-seven thousand two thirty-two.
All right, you heard Sheriff West and the amount, the emotion. But, uh, Ms. Hutchins.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gray, any discussion? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, discussion, are these replacements or?
Yes.
The replacements or what else?
Yes.
Money budget?
No new spies. No, no new spies.
Money budget. Ms. Washington?
Yes, it's, it's just a replacement, so it's a.
Okay.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
Good afternoon. We have been doing a lot of collaborating with first responders over this past weekend, you know, starting with the, starting with the capture for one of our most important fugitives here in Adams County, that we have been tracking for over a year. We worked with police department, head of the on there, and the U S Marshals, and finally got a little help from the public, you know, with a lot, a whole lot of pushing behind the scenes. And we're ready to put the U S Marshals right on the doorstep, and that, that guy, if you really go back and look up his name, he had, he killed, he killed two people, but he was dead, he had shot six of them. So, he was probably one of the worst individuals that had come through Adams County allegedly until that DA court comes, and I'm proud of the work that was done by, by us, the Adams County Sheriff's Office, the NACIS Police Department, and the U S Marshals to intentionally work together on that, on that particular case. Um, I also wanna give a shout out to, to Chief Green, Commander Jerry Ford, and Commander Justin Jones. And I'm calling them out by name because recently, as of this last year, our high school chief Green that's been in there, I can see a clear difference in how they respond, we call for assistance, we respond to them. And the camaraderie is growing, and I can't tell you how much we appreciate the working relationship between the two supervisors, and you just seen me the other day down here at the park, with what was going on down here, and so I called those guys for assistance, but they didn't hesitate to sit there and tie our force down together, and with both agencies being short on staff right now, you know, that is invaluable, to have a working relationship like that. And you gotta look, that happened right after the barge incident happened, where we had suspicious package hit, and that's why I networked and sitting on all these boards, people, I have a lot of boards I sit on, but at a drop of time, I can have whatever resources we don't have in this community within, you know, an hour to minutes, depending on where they coming from. And with the suspicious package, where we had to shut down, where the coast guard had to shut down the river. And with the suspicious package, where we had to shut down, where the Coast Guard had to shut down the river, we had to get people to the barge, we called, um, Natchez Fire, we called, um, Louisiana Sheriff, uh, Quarter Pass Sheriff's Office, Gang Board, Homeland Security, FBI, Coast Guard, Emergency Management, and Dispatch, all of them worked cohesively to set up a command post, and we were able to coordinate, and we, and we had to deal with people too, and coordinate these efforts. JPD's bomb squad was sent down, and they were voted out to the barge, which was the first for them, 'cause usually when the bomb car, bomb squad dispatches, it's usually on length, this was their first time for a home war, and, and you know, we had them on the Adams County search arrest because way of, we had them on four boats, and we barged them a mile down the river, these guys who had never been in the river before, but because we asked, they dropped everything and came down and hid there, and so it is important to network. And I'm certainly appreciative of all the resources that came yesterday, and nobody even mentioned charging anybody. They were just glad to come down to help, and glad this thing was resolved without it actually being a threat. It's better than to hear on the side of caution than to not take that caution and it, and it goes off first and what it did. Uh, I just wanted to mention something else too, we've been trying to get our SAMs number and everything straight at Sheriff's Office for a while now. And I finally just paused, just jumped on to deal with myself, because if SAM's number is not correct, you cannot get grants, you know that, Ms. Washington. And so I've been fighting that vow for months, but I said, I'm gonna sit down today and figure out what is going on. So I sat down the other day to figure out what had happened, and this is what I'm requesting the county, and you, Ms. Washington, I know you don't know, you had nothing to do with this, but what happened is, somebody had reassigned our person of contact for the grants to Mr. Lee's Bill, who no longer works at the county. And so we couldn't get our SAM's number straight, 'cause everything was still going towards her, instead of Sheriff Office or anybody that works at the county. So what I would suggest to the county, 'cause I got, we gonna finish it up today, I got half of the street, Ms. Bill's gonna come over, I reached out to her, and we gonna finish the other half of the day, but I would ask that Ms. Washington be put down as an Austin for the county, 'cause I know y'all have Ms. Mary Kay. But if somebody leave, you gonna be jumping through hoops like I have been for the last eight months, trying to figure out why. And I find those agents, send emails, get live chats, and get somebody to call me, so we can walk through this thing and figure out why we don't have access. So now we know it's being fixed at least, just, just, just ask for me for y'all. Uh, I do wanna thank the county administrator for her time though, she met with us and enterprise the other day. And I gotta tell you, uh, it was, it was actually good to see her work the way she did. She was extremely thorough in how she handled that whole, how she handled that whole meeting, and I really was impressed to see her sit over there as quiet as she is right now, but see how effective she is when it comes down to business. And I just wanna push and say, I think that you, the county has a duty, you, Ms. Washington, the way you operate, how thorough you were, it was very impressive to see you do what you did that day. So I just wanted to bust a big thank you for doing what you did in that county. Uh, also, wanna let you all know, we've been working on Crime Stoppers, 'cause a lot happened after the former chief left with Crime Stoppers. So, we have been really working hard behind the scenes to get the P three app and all this stuff up, 'cause I do wanna see people get paid when they called in to write the way on tips. And Crime Stoppers at the state level has changed, and District, Osar, or whatever last name was, was no longer in that position, and they have a new person in there. For the last eight years, I've been asking the state, why are we not getting funded from the counties on tickets and different things? Tickets that are written, because that's where a lot of Crime Stoppers money comes from, to offer rewards. And I say, you cannot tell me that this county hadn't wrote tickets, and so when the new lady came in, she went back to get an audit, and she found ten thousand dollars in ticket money, that could go towards reward money for the kind of something I've been asking for for eight years for somebody to do, and it was never done, but with the new lady in, she's done that, which that money is gonna be deposited, once we get this P three app back up and on, 'cause some things happened on this side, where it got shut down, and they had to come through emails running the app, but anyway, that ten thousand dollars gonna be reported, uh, from those tickets, that ticket money is gonna be deposited in, in this Crime Stoppers account, we'll be able to offer for, uh, rewards. But what I need the public to know is this, I fought, I begged, I asked, I tried to figure out a way to get some of those folks paid who called in tips, uh, for when we had to rejuvenize here, 'cause it was people who called in, but they called directly into nine-one-one, they did not call through, they did not call through Crime Stoppers, and here's them, and we took this all the way up to the state. If you do not call Crime Stoppers and get assigned a code, you cannot get paid for tips. I don't care if it's me, I don't care if it's the police chief, the mayor, everybody can scream to the top of their lungs, bylaws, all that they are. And you have to call in a tip through the Crime Stoppers line and get coded in order to be paid for. So for all those people going, me and the mayor up, none of them called against Crime Stoppers, they all called either directly to one of us, or called in on nine-one-one, and that did not suffice. And I've sent emails, I've called, I've talked to everybody, and they, I've called other agencies, and I say, even with it being extrajust circumstances, with these folks kicking in the door, 'cause I know me personally, I'm not gonna think of a Crime Stoppers number, if this person is outside my door, or in a car, I'm gonna call and get you there as quick as possible. They say, Sheriff, it doesn't matter, you have to call nine-one-one. So I want the public to know, that if you try to get tips, send a tip in to somebody that, that's offering reward money, you have to call in to their Crime Stoppers number in order to receive that specialized ID and get paid off. And the way that works is, after you receive that specialized ID and you get coded, that's how Crime Stoppers will reach back out to you and say that your tip was good, and they'll leave, they'll tell you what bank to go to, and you give them that specialized ID, and they pay you right there on the spot, that's how that works. Uh, the last thing I want to bring up is Flexi, which is the federal law enforcement training center down in Georgia. That's the largest training center in the United States, that has like three hundred and fifty thousand acres, some, some crazy number of acres, they have their own city down in Georgia, where they train all the federal agents from the, from the ATF, FBI, U S Marshals, uh, CIA, DEA, anybody that I knew, TSA. If you, if you've ever been in any kind of federal law enforcement, you go to Flexi, and that's where I went to for a couple of weeks down there, to train for Homeland Security and get certified as a Homeland Security expert. Well, I want the board to know that they're coming down, their chief of that whole base down here, they're coming down June the seventeenth and the eighteenth. They're putting on a, a free leadership class for law enforcement in the state, they chose Adams County to do it, here and here in Natchez. I couldn't come into town here today because of what I got going on personally, so they asked, did they bring you here? And I was more than happy to host this, and it's gonna be hosted at the Magnolia Casino Hotel, and so far, we have people from twenty-two different agi, two, twenty-two different law enforcement agencies all over the state that are gonna come down to Natchez for this training, and, and I told you, President Wilson, about it, I just want to let the board know about it too as well, just in case any of you all wanna come in and honor and greet all these law enforcement from all over the state. It's good to know law enforcement. I know people say, I might not ever need them, yeah, you might not, but you also may need us. And when you need us, we need to have some kind of relationship, knowing somebody, so you can get a quicker response. And I'm not saying it's favoritism, I'm just saying this is the way law, work, world works. If you call nine-one-one, we're gonna respond accordingly, but sometimes, we can handle ourselves. We can control what you do at Sheriff's Office, but I can't control what kind of response they're gonna give to people, that's what I'm trying to say. I don't care who it is, if you ask us to help.
What's the date, what's the date on it?
June seventeenth and eighteenth, and, and like I said, the second-in-command from Flexi, which is the federal law enforcement training camp that I was telling you about, he's coming down, that's the chief, he's coming down, and their instructor of the year is coming down with him as well, to train all these local law enforcement officers for free. Uh, and I can't tell you how invaluable that is, because I've been to a lot of trainings since I've been sheriff. And I've been to a lot of courses, and nothing has challenged me and changed, or even molded my way of thinking, more than what I've received from being at Flexi Training, and, and, and it's free. And so, we've been trying to save the county money by trying to plug in as many people as we can with Flexi, so that they get that training trust, Flexi, Flexi paid for us to go down, they paid for us to come and get trained. And you know, when they see what kind of individuals you are, they actually pay for you to come down and mentor other people in their program. Like I said, I got a lot going on here locally where I couldn't go, and they turned around and offered it to us, to bring it to us, and I was just ecstatic about that, because, you know, it's been a major push with these organizations to make sure small and rural areas are on the map, and, and small rural law enforcement executives are the ones who recommended the Adams County Sheriff's Office to Flexi, to host down here, which is made, they could have, they, they set me seven hundred strong nationwide, this small rural, the, the Adams County Sheriff's Office to host this training, so that's something to be proud of, and I do appreciate the board for always supporting the well-trained officers. We might not have everything we want, but one thing you all have never backed down on, is training, and I can't tell you how valuable it is to deal with situations like you need here today, and other higher-risk situations that we constantly deal with in this small community, that people don't even have a clue what goes on, and how you have to deal with it. That's all I have for the board, just wanna tell you how I appreciate y'all, appreciate Scott, appreciate Ms. Washington.
Okay, well, I appreciate your, uh, uh, updates, all of them, what's going on, and letting me know what's going on, um, and, uh, okay. Ms. Gray, Lewis first.
I just want the time, I got the dates, the time again and where.
Yeah, uh, it's gonna be at Magnolia Casino Hotel, now from eight to nine, they gonna have it, look, that, that'll be the meeting room, if you can get over there between eight and nine, it'll be great, 'cause I would love for you all to meet these, these agencies, people who come from all over, I mean, when I heard twenty-two agencies coming down, it'd be good to see it. But one of us, Nashville Police Department, gotta give you credit, because we've reached out in the past, and, and I gotta say, this is probably the most participation that we've got, and we've done it. So I'm, I'm happy for the mayor, I'm happy for Chief Green, Commander Ford, Commander Jones, of saying, hey, you wanna make this community better by working together? So, I'm excited about it, yes?
Um, Sheriff, I was on the coast, but I did see a officer in the newspaper where Nancy Dentley died in, uh, a city across the river, and they say that, uh, the office would not release any information about his death, pending autopsy report and complete investigation. My question is, when the complete investigation come back, are they gonna notify y'all?
They're gonna request it. We're gonna request it?
You need to.
We are.
Yeah, you need to, and the next thing is, uh, I was in the doctor's store that night, and somebody, I guess they got the wrong information about the suspicious barge package from the investigation at the Adams County port. So, I just called the port director, I'm like, hey man, what y'all got going on at the port? He said, well, it ain't really going on at the port.
It wasn't.
It was somewhere else.
It was a mile south of the port.
It was a mile south of the port.
That's why I said we put people in boats to get them down, and we loaded up, a lot of vessels on the port dock, because we could see the vessel from where we at, and considering what that vessel was holding, we had to bring in, you have to take consideration flash ratings, if it was something that it, you know, that it came up not being, so you have to consider it, and so we staged up at the port and at the loading dock to get all the personnel who needed to get on that ship down there, and get people off the ship.
So ain't nothing happening at our port?
Ain't nothing happening at the port, it was a mile south of the port, we made sure that we didn't want it, we didn't want it within two miles of the bridge. We tried to keep at least a mile away from the port, so as we were communicating with the captain of that vessel, he asked him to pull over at that mile mark down there.
And last, Mr. President, uh, I'm glad that, uh, the city and county is on, on board with the new fifty, uh, crime cameras to be installed this summer in high-crime areas. Uh, are you gonna be working with the mayor, y'all got a team, or whatever? Because the reason I'm asking, some of these areas that really need a camera, don't want a camera. And it got a high-crime area.
City don't want one?
They don't want one. I'm gonna get, camera types.
Two.
Oh, I know. They don't want a camera.
What you, what you saying is, is absolutely correct, because I've been to four different managers down there. And I haven't been to this most recent manager, but every time I went to the manager, the manager ended up getting switched out. And I have begged and pleaded with people to get that area covered, because I'm gonna call it what it is. That's where everything happens at, because people know it's not a camera down there that lets you break from office. Everybody knows that, it's not a secret.
So, here go what I like, what the mayor of Badaya said, they not gonna put it on the residents to, uh, get the cameras, and they be responsible for, they gonna try to get some wifi in these areas where they can install the NOLA cameras theirself, where you won't put nobody life in jeopardy if, if they doing it off their own wifi. I would suggest, if you working with the mayor, or whoever you working with, some of these high-crime areas that don't have wifi, we need to find a way to get wifi in there, where we can install these NOLA cameras ourself.
Here's where I like, I like board members to be on that, in that process as well, 'cause that sheriff, I can recommend it, but it's a holder thing.
Nah, I sure would be on it, man.
I'd like for, if you gonna do it, that's fine.
As if we know, President.
Okay. You ready?
That was ever my question, I mean, well, not exactly, but, you know, I seen the officer also, and I was just making sure that everybody was on, you know, the same accord, and you got fifty new cameras, to kind of make sure that you get those areas. I wanted to make sure that you, you were gonna have the opportunity to cover those high-crime areas in the county, you know, since y'all have a really good relationship, and I, and I hadn't talked to anybody from the county side, and so that's what I wanted to ask, basically ask, are, are you gonna, out of the fifty, 'cause I'm, uh, would you get some of your, uh, main crime areas covered?
And I'm gonna ask that, when y'all request this meeting with the city, put that on the gym, that way.
Well, I'm just, so that's why, that's why I'm asking, are you, is it, basically what I'm saying, so you know, are you at the table, are you being able to get the, sure, I remember when this came up, uh, when the grant was found, uh, after all this happened, and it was rolled through the city, and I think it was the last, and the last administrative, and we using the counter came in, and so, uh, I was kinda like under the pressure from the last ever, that you didn't get, that we wasn't getting, uh, our fashion to take a camera, and, 'cause most of them, and I say all of us in the point, but we didn't get, what, you didn't get exactly proper some of what you need. So at this point, and we got fifty new cameras, I just wanna make sure that it's a county-city, it's a mixed-rural area thing, wanna make sure that the county is getting what it need, because the NOLA cameras have definitely helped solve a lot of crimes, they have, uh, deterred a lot of crimes, so if you can catch some of these other high-crime areas, it will pretty much continue to deter, and then help your own crimes off.
And see, what it is, is the city actually submitted the grant, but it was based on a agreement with all of us.
Yes.
And that's why I really want supervisor to take, I need you all to get the tape. Somebody need to be a tape representative for years, well.
Okay.
'Cause they have the mayor, and they have all the women, Sarah Carter, and like with county officials, but I, I, I wanna supervise, you know, I ask for that.
You got one.
And, 'cause see, like, that list that you referring to, on the, on the previous administration, 'cause it was gun-driven, police department with us agreeing to it, you know, I, we made suggestions to that list, but I don't know what's on with this. So that's why I'm asking, and, and when it came back up, we had to do a press conference in order to make sure the grant continues on, and we did what we needed to, and I do think the mayor and the board and the agencies will work with us, because like they pretty much said, they don't need it, 'cause they paid for it.
Yeah.
But we wanted.
Yeah.
Tell you now, we wanted, we want some cameras in the county, and we getting the most sun in those areas that you open, because everybody in Natchez knows that when the shooting goes on in that area, then everybody go through those fire, right over there. Everybody knows which apartments they gonna go in, and they empty, and I'm, I'm saying it publicly, because I want them to know we see, and I want them to know we don't touch you.
Yeah.
That's why we talking so much about this case and other cases, 'cause you run, but once we on you, we gonna touch you. I can, I can promise you, we gonna touch you, but those cameras will be a help, because it'll take those uncovered. But those cameras will be a help, because it'll take those uncovered areas out of place, just like they do out there.
You know, and that's basically what I say, so I'm glad I asked that question in our year before, but we, I think, in the last four years, that we did have, we made leaps and bounds with the county and the city, the sheriff department, the police department, and coming together. But I also know, for things to work and continue to work, that's from the county, the city, the president of the board, the mayor, the officer, the supervisor. We gotta be transparent, and we start addressing one issue, we need to address all the issues, because when everybody on the same accord and know what's going on, we can get more accomplished. When we, if the county move forward and doing something like, and I'm glad that Mr. Gray brought it up this morning, well, we bringing it simple as a swimming pool. A swimming pool, oh, but hey, the city pay part of, so when are you gonna get on the counter, Jim? I mean, sit there, Jim, and so everybody be on one accord. And so that's basically what I want. Make sure that everybody on one accord, everything stay transparent, and we can move forward and help the community as a whole, I hear you, Mr. President.
All right. And I'm gonna tell you how this, when we put those cameras in, in the county, where it used to be a problem, it's even, we hang out in the mirror no more. They don't even hang out.
And you crazy, you gotta really be seeing.
It'll be a test of few of them.
And they don't even hang in the mirror no more, so. It's all a hack.
All right, thank you, Sheriff. All right, any other departmental reports? Public comments? Is that me?
Thank you. Uh, I'm actually glad I listened to a lot of this, it actually, I have no prepared comments, other than I was coming to talk about the nine-one-one system in general. I've heard an awful lot today that has actually added to my comments.
Hold on, she needs your name and address for you to speak.
I'm Sam Mosby, two oh eight South Union Street. I live in the city and also in the county.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, okay, I'll leave a little bit of questions, okay. I've had two instances with E nine-one-one in the last month or so, and and I've heard a lot of stuff today that it actually changed my opinion or thought a little bit. One is the cooperative of the E nine-one-one service between the county, the city, and whatever. Is it merely a telephone answering cooperative? Or is it a true cooperative, like when the fire, you know, the city and the county have fire in our local agreements? And a fire truck goes out? What about E nine-one-one? Is it strictly a telephone answering agreement?
That's a dispatch center for, and they try to get the calls to the sheriff's department, the agency of the sheriff, or they send it to the police department, or they send it to the fire department, depending on what you're asking.
It is a agreement.
It's a total agreement.
So how do they know where to send the call to?
Okay, I work at E nine-one-one, you make a call in, and you say, what is your address? You say, I'm on so-and-so, so-and-so, no, you. Then that person that dispatching the call, should know to call the police department, because that's inside the city limits.
Okay.
So if you say, whatever, in the county, promo, they not gonna call the police department, they gonna call the sheriff's department, and if the sheriff needs some assistance, then he'll call the police department and ask for some assistance like that.
Okay, the reason I'm here is for that very comment.
Oh, the sheriff do that.
Yeah, I mean, I've had two, two instances in my entire life I've lived here. But one was, uh, one, I heard another thing, I heard a report from E nine-one-one earlier about number of calls and this, that, and the other. Well, part of number of calls is you have to handle calls. Some are frivolous, some are legit, some are important, some are just junk. It's like the emergency room at the hospital. Some people use it very much like a doctor's office, it's not, it's for emergencies. You know, nine-one-one is not, you know, for certain things.
Actually, nine-one-one is your single point contact to law enforcement or some sort of emergency. So if you need to, if you need to talk to the sheriff's office, nine-one-one. So that they handle inbound calls, and they direct them to you. So it's not just for emergencies. I need to make a report, this, I just got something, yeah, I want the sheriff to know about asking something, nine-one-one.
I didn't yield my floor to you.
I'm sorry. I'm the board attorney, and, you know, I'll correct you when I want to.
Can you tell us what happened, you said happened this weekend?
No, well, the first time was, I attempted to not call nine-one-one. There was an event, a lady was coming up and down South Union Street, hitting cars, hitting cars, hitting cars, wrecked her car, stopped. I did a typical, modern thing, I said, Siri, call the Nashville Police Department. Because it was not an emergency. At this point, she was stopped. I mean, she was right in front of the St. Mary's Church, stopped, and I wouldn't let her leave. And I said, call the Nashville Police Department. You get the Nashville Police Department, says, please punch one for this, two for that, three for whatever. You punch it, it says, this is an invalid request. You can't get anybody by calling somebody without calling the emergency system, which overloaded the emergency system.
The emergency system is not.
I'm not, you don't need to use Scott.
God, God, hold on, let me finish. Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Mo.
But you should not have to call the emergency system when you don't need to, but you have to call the emergency, which overloaded the emergency system, okay? Well, yesterday, or two days ago, there was a lady, again, not what I call an emergency by any means. Her car was broken down, going up the hill by sixty-one Hill, uh, at Sibley, close to Kings Road, dead center of the lines, going up the hill, and she was out trying to push it. All right, well, you know, the humanitarian people typically will take care of that. There's no reason to call emergency or anything like that, except for the situation right there, it was going up a hill, it wasn't going anywhere. So I did call nine-one-one, and I said, this is not a super emergency. I said, but this, it could be, but we don't get this car out of the center of Highway sixty-one. They questioned me, they questioned me, what color is the car, what is this? I said, I get all that, that's fine, send somebody. Nobody showed up for an hour, nobody. And I know good and well that there was a city cop, which we were outside Sibley's, but there was a city cop more than likely sitting at the old Trinity, sitting there. There was a sheriff deputy somewhere on that part of town that could have been there in less than fifteen, twenty minutes. But they called according to traps. They likely called a highway patrolmen out of Brookhaven. Now, how is that a cooperative nine-one-one system? That's ridiculous. That's not a cooperative nine-one-one system.
It, it's almost like you have to be careful about what you say. If you say, call them nine-one-one, it is an emergency of sort, so everything's emergency. So you, you say, I need a deputy. Because when you're on a highway close to town or anywhere in the immediate county area, you know, when you're all the way out the other side of state, it's a little harder for the deputies to get there. But that, that's what they do, they ride those roads, and if you need a sheriff's deputy, you can say, I need a sheriff's deputy. And if they, they think the highway patrol needs to be called, they'll call them. Now, if there's a big wreck, yeah, the highway patrol's coming, but, but like I say, on a weekend especially, you don't know where those guys.
But that's what I'm saying, is, is if there's a true interlocutor agreement other than answering the telephone for nine-one-one. I mean, if you're, if that's the case, we could do that in India.
Mr. President, Sheriff, could you explain the agreement?
It is a, well, you asked me to call.
Yeah.
I just wanted to clarify what needs to be. Let me clarify, when he called, I told him, I told him, if he has a complaint, I'm not the one he has to complain, complain to on the E nine-one, because they don't work for me. And I told him, who needs to hear your complaint is board. So that's, that's how he ended up here.
Yeah, but it's playing hard.
But the way, the way the system works is, if you really wanna, you talk to us, just like Attorney Scott said, if you wanna respond to anybody, you have to call nine-one-one. And I did a little digging on this call to see why, because I knew, I know how many different I had. And normally, when you're on a state highway like that, MHP is gonna be the one to respond. But I don't know where y'all got crossed up there, and you tell me if this is wrong, but this is what I was told. What I was told is, when you call, they said that, and I don't know what Ms. Phelan's gonna look up for you, but they said that you, you said you had, and that's why they didn't send anybody.
I had.
That you had, that you was gonna push those people out the road, because that's, when you call.
She called me after you called, between now and then.
I'm talking about the dispatcher, because I.
That, she listened to the tape, and she said, because I told her I couldn't understand the answerer, the first person answering the telephone, you couldn't understand what they were saying. I said, are you talking French?
Okay, well, whatever miscommunication was, when you called me, it had me pretty tired too. Because I know how much people running, on Saturday, this Saturday, we had like six funerals. And so at that time, I can tell you why deputies weren't out there, because, again, state highways, MHP, we patrol them just like we do everybody else. I have my people in neighborhoods, because I'm trying to keep crime down, and when they need to hit state highways, they do it. But in this particular case, you had deputies all over the county pulling funerals, like all over the county, but that's what the.
Not a single one wrote about that, lady.
You're right, and you're right, but again, when I called the dispatcher, the dispatcher said that, this is what the dispatcher said, they said that you called about a car, but you also told them you didn't need, because you were gonna get it out the road. And that's no error on your part. I still would have felt better if somebody would have responded and been dispatched, but we can't respond if we don't even know what's going on. So I'm sure you seen a deputy out there, because I called on the air and asked for them to come down there. Now, this time I got out of the road.
By the time we got her out of there, we didn't.
Even though I'm listening to him on the air.
We did not.
Okay. Well, anyway, but the way it works though is, I can't, I don't control dispatch.
Well, I mean, I thought I was coming to support you, I wasn't coming to argue with you.
What happened?
Well, if, if.
I'm not arguing.
But I'm just trying to make a complaint and say this, I wasn't coming to argue with you. I'm trapped, and I'm not gonna argue with you anymore either.
Let me be clear.
I got the floor.
Well.
I'm not arguing.
Sometimes things fall through the cracks, and if, if, if they can do a better job, you need to go to the nine-one-one board meeting or something, they, they have an advisory board. And if, if somebody sees a better way to do things, that's, that's what we need to do. Uh, you know, when you break down the calls, you're not gonna overload the nine-one-one system, I don't think. They take about a hundred calls a day or so, maybe more than that, Annette would know that better now, but but it pans out to sixty-six actual emergencies a day. Uh, it, it, if you break it down into the whole month of what she gave us earlier. So you're not gonna overload the system, but, but people have to be very direct about what they're calling about. And it's an emergency. You wouldn't call nine-one-one if, if DoorDash didn't show up, you didn't, you probably.
I would call nine-one-one the first one I told you.
But they do have those problems.
When I answered the phone.
Yeah, they do have those kind of problems.
Yes, Mr. Mo. Uh, when, when the city had their police department and sheriff had their police department, you could call direct to the city. You could call direct to the sheriff's department. But once they merge, then that's when they came up, call nine-one-one for all calls, whether it's an emergency or not.
I understand, and part of my complaint is, I don't think it's working properly, okay? Part of my complaint is, I don't think it's working efficiently for taxpayers and saving lives. Second is, regardless of when you said your deputy showed up, it was at least forty-five minutes to an hour after the call. Unacceptable. Any nine-one-one call, it could be, whether it's real or fake, you don't know. An hour response time in Nashville, Mississippi, Adams County is unacceptable, period. I don't care if it's from the city police, the sheriff's department, the highway patrol, the ambulance, whatever, they park them all over town. If we're truly working as a cooperative, other than answering the telephone, if there was a city cop a quarter of a mile away from this, why not send the city cop? Yes, they are, they are duly commissioned inside the county and each other, they commission each other at times.
He can't go out in the county, but the sheriff's department can come in the city.
That's not, well, yeah, well, the sheriff's department could definitely come in the city, because it's in the county.
Right, right.
That's why everybody calls the county, because we're in the county, that's why I told you when I first walked up here. I live in the city and also live in the county. I live at two oh eight South Union Street. I am just as much a county resident as anybody who's on Southland Road or anywhere else. Don't discount county service to me, because I live in the city. Don't do it.
Well, the sheriff will come do just about any call, it doesn't matter where it's at.
Well, I know, because I know, and I called it.
But, uh, uh, you know, there are things, politics crack, and, and, and because she brought this up, it'll help in training sessions, because the dispatchers need to know what they, what to do. But, but somebody should be dispatched, just every call made, just about, because you drive, you don't know, it's okay for a minute, but thirty seconds later, it might be something else going on, because things escalate very quickly sometimes in long.
This car was stuck in middle of the highway. And thank God, a handful of nice people, probably a hundred, just drove past. But a few people stopped and actually tried to help this lady.
Well, luckily we stay out of the good citizens, and, and most of them are just getting on their way, I think somebody else will take care of it, but, but there's others that are gonna stop. I have to be one of those, I'm not, somebody else.
But again, Kevin, part of this is, is if the, if the nine-one-one system is gonna be truly effective for emergency calls, the non-emergency calls need to be handled without calling the city of Nashville and getting an answer. Your thing doesn't work, you don't have to work. I mean, what else do you do? Not, you're trained. All right, I've tried to call the city of Nashville, I've tried to call the Adams County Sheriff's Department, I've tried to call this, nobody answers the phone, what do you get? Nine-one-one? Because you know somebody's gonna answer the phone.
Um, I would have called back and said, look, and then they would probably tell me, well, you said it went important, or, or I'm gonna get it out of the road, and that's, that's the key, that's the thing that stopped that from happening in a, in a timely manner, was just the words used. It's not, well, it, it, but I hadn't listened, I hadn't listened to it, but that's what it sounded like. We're gonna have to move on.
You're probably right, you're probably right.
And that's all, that's all of it, what you say, but, uh.
The only reason I disagree with you is the lady that called from nine-one-one, called me after.
She called this morning?
Yeah, this morning, after Travis told her I was coming here, and she took offense that I was coming to the board instead of coming to her, and I'm like, I don't even know who you are, and I was told by Travis to come to the board. And she got all upset, and she started listening to it, and she actually, I think, was on my side after listening to the tape, so there is no, that, that, the E nine-one-one officer had no right to make a judgment call on anything, whether something's important or not important, that's how people got it.
Well, the complaint will help her train her people better, because she has a hard time keeping people, because I don't know if you know it or not, but they're in a dungeon down here.
Oh, I know.
The sheriff's office. We're trying to get, and we're trying to get that fixed, but we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna move on, because, uh.
Yeah, I need to go back to work, I've been here two and a half hours.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any more public comments?
And sorry, Scott, I'm still like. And sorry, Scott, I'm still like.
Okay.
Most of the time.
Are we ready to, are we ready to, uh, go around the table? Or is there something else I need to take care of? Public comments. Sir, what do you, do you need something?
Yes.
Well, no, I'm just here to.
Just listening.
Okay.
Is there anything that we said about the Bellwood project in this meeting?
Not in this session.
Okay.
Okay. All right. We need to go around the table. Mr. Gray.
Uh, I'm not sure. Is it? Teachers Appreciation Month or Educate Education Month?
Teachers Appreciation Week in Natchez Appreciation.
Well, I'm glad you helped me out with that because I saw on Facebook where it said LSU named school of education after two trailblazers for school ratio. It was the history moment of the Payne family, third and maybe second as Pearl Payne and Lutrinna Payne was the first African American to attend LSU. And the reason I brought that up is because the the other Payne family, Mr. Payne, is from here, Ralph Payne. And Kristen Payne is married to Toni Gator. That is his wife, grandmother, and grandfather. Was the first ones to attend LSU. Needs to be in my checking. I ain't have no idea.
So how'd you keep all that straight without reading it?
And another thing I want to congratulate, Ms. Taylor Hughes, for being an alternate state teacher of the year by Mississippi Department of Education. And congratulations to, uh, AC Track team. And I know that they win the state, but I've seen them on some of them on the metal stand. And congratulations to, uh, Markeith Thompson of Natchez High School, won the boys three hundred meter championship with the fastest time in the state of Mississippi. Thought that was awesome. And then we had one guy, DK McGruder, signed with Tulane. Okay, but most of us attended the Natchez, I mean, the National Prayer Day. And, uh, I thought it was a good event. Uh, the minister allows. Always do that and is always needed. And, uh, I think we need to do it more than just once a year. We need to maybe do it quarterly or once a month. But anyway, uh, Ms., uh, I saw a flyer say, uh, Broadband Association is hosting a spring broadband summit May the seventeenth at Millsap Cottage, and it is free. I don't know if anybody from this county need to go. Maybe the IT guy need to go or whatever the case may be. But I know we got a lot of broadband work that we need to do in our community. Uh, Rodney, I gave you the information about the tree. And I got a couple more sites, uh, there on the hand until you happen to board me. But, uh, Southview, we right back where we started. The guy's doing the same thing this other guy was doing on that property they talking about. He going and stacking all this stuff right back on the property. So Scott, can we, is the time up? Or can we send him a letter?
Yes, I think we got to give notice to the state of Mississippi too.
Okay. And, uh, Rob, uh, I know the property I bought, Colleen, you say the city and the county own that property. Uh, don't you think we need to have a conversation, man, where we can, uh, possibly clean it off? And where we can be getting dirt instead of paying for dirt? Or we can be getting dirt from our own dirt pit?
We do. We do. But we are getting free dirt now too.
Are we getting free dirt?
Some.
Okay, in the in the meantime, could we set up a meeting where we can see, can we, uh, get our own dirt pit?
I guess we could add that to all the meeting then just to kind of mention it because it's going to make a short conversation, I would think.
We had their, if they want to follow the mound, we get some of that guys here to pitch trying to get, uh, some gravel.
And there's, uh, my sister goes out to the Dodderich family, the Smallwood family. He used to be, uh, on the board of education down there in the county. And the Bailey family, the Rush family, the Winston family, the Davis family, the Butler family. And, uh, uh, former police officer Dawson Pears, the Dawson family. And Sheriff, again, uh, once you get that, uh, information about what happened to, uh, Harrington Ashley, uh, you need to update the board on that information. And congratulations goes out to all the, uh, high school students and college students that that going to graduate from high school and college and they're completely.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Ms. Hudson?
Yes. Um, I just want to kind of do, have everyone submitted to commit their application for the summer work. Uh, yes.
Send the word for me. I have to ask her about it. Okay?
All right. Yeah, just make sure you all get that in this week because we're going to start assigning them to the given departments. And giving them their orientation. Uh, the next thing I have is we need to get a full book of Roca May the ninth. This is for our board members to attend the Southwest Planning and Development meeting in Roca. PPD, PPD, yeah, PPD. Yeah. Motion, okay.
Motion by Mr. Gray, second by Mr. Milton. Uh, any discussion? Miss Southwest Mississippi.
This is Southwest, PPD, I was filed the counties in the Southwest. Get the update on Thursday. It's Thursday morning at ten thirty.
No, it's not.
Is it ten thirty? Is it ten thirty?
Yeah, ten thirty at one.
Can I get that?
All in favor? Motion carried.
It's ten thirty.
Ten thirty, yeah.
Now, excuse me, Mr. President, this ain't, you know, our Southwest plan. This is that like Southwest PPD, I think, the seven, the regional reading, but the seven and nine counties all read together. So it's what's said. No, Southwest regional. All right.
Okay, next thing else is, uh, the scholarships. Just want to make sure everybody's paid up for the scholarship. Supervisors, where you have you.
I'm waiting on the bring up.
That's what you was going to bring up. Okay. Another thing, yes, Robbie, have you heard anything back from, uh, Soil and Water Conservation, uh, EWP project for Gart City Bridge? And then I know we submitted.
We submitted in my green, our last Mike, uh, today. Is there anything? I talked to him last, I was waiting last Thursday. But, uh, he didn't mention it.
Yeah, just do an update. Find out where we all with that. Okay. Um, next thing I have is I got something here. Supervisor, where myself was at a conference in Hattiesburg. And this is something that, uh, Ronnie Shallow has brought up about, um, that it's going to be a meeting in Hattiesburg on May the eleventh from nine AM to twelve PM. And this is for pine-belt minority farmers. What it is, is if you got sixty acres of black land, uh, solar, they'll be coming out to look at it to see if they can lease your land for at least ten years. Uh, you'll be compensated for it. And so they're going to have a meeting on this, um, May the eleventh from nine to twelve in Hattiesburg. Uh, you didn't, more information, I'm going to submit this to the gentleman, Ms. Jan, so you could print it for, uh, anyone to see. And I'll give you a copy of this. Next thing else did, um, the groundbreaking, that was good. Um, I'm just glad to see that that happened, Chandler. Um, that was great that you did the press relief on groundbreaking. And it's a good thing for the city and county together. The city was there, the county was there, and all supervisors were there. So that was good. And, uh, we appreciate all that that they're coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. Okay.
Well, um, the question kind of took care that, uh, most now are going to make some travel, uh, a lot of things. Mr. Gray, just, uh, Robbie, uh, for you, I talked to Mr. Newman, Walter Newman out of Colleen. And so this is, it's a tree right there that Colleen actually won't cut. He don't know if it's on the county. He don't know where the line at right there. The trees must have kind of overhanged the road. And I knew, you know, from the county, our property line is somewhere there. And I don't have, I told him I didn't have an idea, but I was bringing it forward in that way. Uh, did we, did we ever get that last time we were looking at it? Uh, because I know it's a property in between there because, you know, we talked about the, they wanted us to donate some property for the liming program or something like that. But if you would, just he can tell you more about it than I can. Mr. Walter Newman over at Colleen. Yeah, I know. That's what I'm saying, though. We can do that. And, um, on the, uh, other thing I said, that's what I said, like, we got a lot of things that we have worked good for, uh, the last four years. And I think we can definitely continue work for, uh, keeping a good relationship. If we can get more comfortable together than we feel separate. But we have a lot of issues. And I would ask, not major issues, but when we come to the county and city, that's like the land, not a major issue. Uh, we either got E nine one one, uh, just different things like that, nothing major issues. But we all need, we got five. So and you see how hard it is to get on one accord. So I would ask that the issues that we deal with, not just one, because there's no need to deal with an issue today, going back tomorrow. Can we put all the issues on one agenda? So when we sit at the table, that we can get most of them, uh, worked out on the meeting side. Yeah. And, uh, other than that, you know, Sheriff, again, I, you know, I appreciate the work that you done and the things that you're doing and, uh, crime cameras and stuff like that is very important. I think supervisor brings here that you'll be at the table on some of that meetings right there. And, uh, you know, to the board, uh, is okay with it. I'm not saying that Mr. Gray, if Mr. Gray is not available, uh, I'll try to make myself available so we can make sure that we, you know, keep paying because I see how it's working with the police department, sheriff's department, Concordia. When y'all work on one court, y'all get stuff together. And, uh, I don't know if you know it or not, I was, you know, I do a lot of reading it. Did you know that, uh, on the weekend, per capita, Natchez was number two for the most dangerous city in, uh, Mississippi?
Peter Bass.
Did you, did you, did you read those statistics? So you know.
I didn't look at it.
Ha? But I mean, it's not actually not that, but I'm saying from the national level, if you looked up an article that came to my phone read news break, news break, they had ten most dangerous cities in here. And right up there where the police chief went was number one, Cleveland up in there. And Natchez was dead in it, had Hattiesburg, Jackson. So I, that was kind of shocking to believe. You know, to see that's kind of statistics. So that's why I'm definitely so important on dealing with that. Because, you know, you don't want businesses on one locate, tours are number one industry. People read that and that's just making deter. But anyway, I guess thanks for what you're doing. Uh, we'd be willing to get on one court and sit out here for.
Scott, uh, we got this issue pretty big with Lake Montrose again. And it wasn't, it was, it was like, I didn't even live out there, went out there and said, bad. So you get the cold patch trouble.
Don't be out there two days.
Also, kind of what Sheriff Page touched on earlier was an event that happened yesterday at Prophet's Park. Uh, I received a phone call yesterday afternoon, uh, and rode out there. And, um, I first called Corbett to find out who had rented the park on the way out there. And, uh, and I made a few passes and actually ended up passing Corbett. She came out there. And then we reached out to Sheriff and he sent deputies and police out there. The person who rented the park said that the event got out of control, couldn't control it. Uh, they were parked on River Terminal Road on both sides of the shoulders from IP Stackyard past Prophet's Road. There were, how many people, Sheriff?
It had to be close to a thousand of all people out there. It was.
Think over now.
No.
No, that's what they said before.
It was supposed to be, uh, a family. Family fun, fun day.
But they were in the road. He couldn't get through. They wouldn't share it.
I had thrown lights.
In River Terminal.
I had thrown lights inside to get down River Terminal and clear everybody out of the road.
Uh, cars peeling out, uh, cars doing donuts in the grass out there. Foilers, little babies running around in diapers about to get run over. It was out of control. Uh, so I rode through there this morning at daylight, took some pictures, parked some ass, uh, trash everywhere, rubbed it up. So.
So, so, so that, so. That mean the deposit that that person put out, he's not going to get that.
He's not going to get it back. And he's not going to get to Cannon Park again if I have anything to do with it. Uh, that can come to my board.
Okay. I, I, I was late. Uh, did, um, did, um, let's say, go and the other guy showed up from Bronwell Utility.
Yes.
Somebody showed up. So I don't know what the clear understanding, did anybody get a clear understanding of what he wants?
So, so what, so what the board asked, does Ash Robb make inventory of the various things that are outstanding with Bronwell? Including the one he was talking about before back to the board.
Yeah. And so that's what basically I wanted, uh, because they, they understood, right? Basically, look at the one that we cold patch or whatever. Uh, but he went, I did go there, invited me to a meeting. And I, uh, and I did explain to them and they was, didn't have an understanding. I told them we put stuff in place for a permit that we could not, uh, every company that dig up our service. You know, they were, we were responsible for our services and that they have pipes, we have cable, whatever you have running our circuit that you're responsible for. And so the thing he had, he said they had like two holes and, you know, I think they changed, uh, they done changed leadership or whatever, and they trying to get it back on track. So they didn't actually ask for it. They asked to look at cold patch. And that what he told you?
He asked for hot mix this morning, but it's one area that I'm going to go look at, take care of, a small area. But the rest of it, I'm going to.
Yeah, every, every late discussion. Okay, okay. Well, I'm sorry I wasn't here. Sorry. But, uh.
He said, he said that you were there at the.
Yeah, and I did. And I'm sorry I wasn't here. But, you know, I'm, I'm, but I made, I just wanted to, uh, visit it. Because, uh, the secret, they called me and they asked me, well, what can I do? And I told them, the best thing to do is come to the board because there's a five board, uh, member board. And I couldn't make that decision. So you need to come before the board and we can have a discussion so everybody be on one.
Yeah, we were on one court on that.
Yeah.
Well, two, I, we did let them know once we paved those streets and they cut them up. It ain't our responsibility to go back out there and fix them up after that.
Well, I wasn't here, but it was reiterated because that's the same thing I told them.
Yeah, everybody's on the same. All right, uh, Ms. Payston, you have?
Um, yes, uh, the first thing that I have is, uh, we received two, um, letters back from DOR in regards to two people who did objections for their homestead. So, uh, one of them, the DOR, um, has reversed the homestead back. And the other one was not reversed.
All right, do we need?
Yep.
Put the names on the record for that?
Just a motion to approve the Department of Revenue's recommendations.
I believe that we approved the Department of Revenue, a revenue recommendation.
All right, motion by Mr. Gray, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion carried.
Um, there is a letter here from State Aid in regards to the final inspection on Stateport Road. Um, it needs to be signed by the president. Says the construction of this project has been complete and the construction acceptance date is April the fifteenth. Um, if deficiency were found during the final audit process, we will contact you for additional information or documentation. So it has an order to be signed in order to do that.
All right, uh, Robert, need a motion to, for me to be able to sign this?
It's good, Robert.
I wrote through it last week. I got that. I didn't know anything about it. I got it last week, wrote through that, uh, met the contractor out there. I got it last week, wrote through, met, uh, met the contractor out there. Took pictures, it was about four sites, it had some reels, and one had a pretty good wash in it, and they were addressing all those, got emails and all that, it is complete.
So it did.
It addressed it, I will get new pictures on the follow-up.
Okay, all right, uh, so I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Gaines, and he has a second.
Say.
Second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor?
The contractors responded immediately, we probably sent, told me, here's the issue's gonna be done. I sent it to them, and probably five minutes later, they were going out there immediately, and I think within the next day or so.
I bet.
And that was, we appreciate that. And I did, I did port over to you, Mr. Gaines, that way you too could.
Okay.
So I still have a timer?
Um, I think they have retained, I think that's what you're approving.
Is that what that is?
No, that's it.
Um, this is also on State Park Road, I believe that Mr. Marlowe emailed Mr. Brady, it's called a request for termination of coverage, large construction general permit. Um, looks like this form is from N D U Q, there's pictures attached.
Say it again, now, what is?
This is called a request for termination of coverage, large construction general permit. And it's on State Park Road.
Basically, this means construction of State Park Road is over, it is over.
And they just need the president's signature.
Need a motion to sign this request for termination of coverage?
So move.
Second by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Uh, motion carried.
Um, I'm not too familiar with this, I believe Scott can probably add something to this, but, um, they were talking about on our land records, the deeds, if the pin number could be added to that document, I don't know, something mentioned to Brady to discuss that.
For what?
For, uh, recording land deeds, if they can include a pin number on those documents, it would be a lot easier to search.
Yes, it can.
I guess the people that are giving the deeds.
I'll look into our research, whether we can require that or not. There is a requirement of certain things, so does that legislature speak to that? Excludes us from doing other things, I don't know.
If you can talk about when that, when the attorneys produce a document. Good idea, it seems like.
Um, the next thing I have is the April, uh, bill tracking report for the sheriff's office.
Need a bill tracker report, spread across the minutes.
So move.
Second by Ms. Hutchins.
Say.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Motion carried.
And the last thing I have is the, um, second part of the application that needs to be submitted up, um, to N D U Q for St. Catherine Creek, for a, to go along with the permit.
Need to spread a document across the record, record for, uh, St. Catherine Creek.
So move.
Say.
Second by Ms. Gaines, second by Ms. Hutchins. All, uh, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
With you.
Good, okay.
Oh, you know, yeah, no, thank you, all right.
Uh, good question. Anything else?
Uh, that is it.
Mr. Slow.
Mr. Young, Mr. Peter.
Okay, this is Washington.
Um, yes, I have a request from the District Attorney's Office to, um, to do a reimbursement for payroll. They wanted to run that off through our system, and we just filled them, and it's already been issued.
What's that, the District Attorney's?
That was state.
That's right.
How would that work, Scott?
They just have to act.
Well.
Well, we need to do a little chicken too, do a little research on it before we make a decision now.
I know, well, uh, state.
If anything, they would still need a budget amendment, so they would still need to make that.
All right.
Um, I have a legitimate amendment for the circuit clerk, the county administration, maintenance of buildings, and civil defense.
Uh-huh.
Legitimate request.
Uh, what?
Um, just, it's a multiple one, just for these models to pass, um.
Are they getting money from one place to the other?
Looking at budget.
This is which item?
And what department is this?
Um, it's the maintenance of buildings, circuit clerk, um, civil defense, and, um, certain nice, the accounting department.
All right, need a motion?
So move.
Say.
Second by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carried.
And lastly, I have a request for an executive station, because I ain't personally, uh.
Okay. Anybody else, I guess I'm on, uh, on the left here, and it's, it's not gonna be pretty. All right, uh, I don't know how y'all want to prove all this, these travels, uh, that's the first thing we're gonna work on. Uh, got a request by Shaqie Martin for June tenth through thirteenth conference in Biloxi, two hundred and eighty-four dollars. Uh, y'all wanna take them all together?
Yeah, 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 I'll, I'll.
Okay. This, Angela Hutchins, this is Southwest P D., what y'all talked about earlier?
Sorry.
Okay. Uh, Stephanie Workshop in Ridgeland. Some of these just need to be signed.
Yeah, some of them just probably.
Shaqie's had not been approved, this one has not been approved.
I thought it was approved. Shaqie's was approved with us. It was everybody approved, it was his hands.
Yeah, sign that. You said this one's been approved.
Yeah. Yeah.
That must've been one of them. Uh, Randy Freener, constable training, uh, June the twelfth. Uh, yeah, uh, the cell Davis as well. Travel voucher for James Gray. For, uh.
That's a reimbursement.
Reimbursement, I just need to sign that. Uh, same thing with, uh, Angela Hutchins. I guess, do they need to sign them? I've got same thirteen, we got, uh, stack. That's for this, right? That says same thing. This one over there. This ain't signed, it's signed right here. All right, uh, Clementine Lewis, says reimbursement, it's already been signed. This one already been approved. Okay, Clementine Lewis for travel. Uh, Angela Hutchins. Conference on June the fourth through the ninth.
That's a dusty, dusty confederate.
You need to, uh, you need to sign it too. Okay, so these all need, need approval. I need a motion.
I'll make one for the travel.
You're right there, too. Okay, last one. Okay, need a motion for those travels?
I'll make one for the travel.
All right, approved by Mr. Gaines, second, I mean, uh, motion, second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Motion carried. All right, Ricky needs to sign this one, Ricky needs to sign this one. By the time I figure out all these forms, I'll be impressed.
You might get reformed in this.
Oh, I would think y'all really didn't like.
Just don't show them what we would like.
That's a good reason to show up. All right, what is it? Well, um, I think Scott said we'd already done that.
He just needs to sign an initial.
This is the airman, where we, where the employees can sign it, tax, uh, pull it out of the payroll?
Yeah.
Um, let me see what for Mr. James Lee, if there were forms off, there might be some more.
It's, it's, you come in the envelope like that?
Familiar with this, aren't you?
I'm gonna try and call balls and scud.
Is it draft?
Yeah, that's it, I see that.
Yeah, but I don't see the documents for it. Is there anything here?
So what is going on?
Okay, Rosa Newman and, uh, James Lee.
What's the name?
From Biloxi, twenty-fifth through twenty-eighth.
Oh, this one?
Yes, ma'am. No, Jean, I'm sorry.
Jean. All the tax forms?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Motion pending, they get proper paperwork here.
I'll make a motion pending proper paperwork.
Second by Mr. Gaines, second by Ms. Hutchins. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carried.
Make sure we have, uh, approved, prior, uh, with proper paperwork coming up.
Ricky send this back down too. Okay, I think that clears the folder pretty much. Couple of little things here. All right, I got a note here from, uh, A J F C, Adams County Community, where it stays, May twenty-third, ten to one, at Lewis Gunning Community Safe Room, for anybody that wants to attend that, free food. Everybody be there.
The date is?
May twenty-third.
May twenty-third, tw- ten to one, at the safe room.
Ten to one.
They have free food, got somebody's attention. Nashville's busy in civic league, uh, uh, it's a lateral appreciation on behalf of Jim Wareham and members, thanking us for the forty-sixth annual awards, thanking our sponsorship of that. Uh, is that everything, please? Enjoy that event out there for the RV resort. Oh, you know, somebody bringing thirty million dollars to this community, it seems like a really great idea to me, but I rarely get on Facebook and, and look at posts that were added to whatever the Democrat said, or whatever, but the negativity in the community was something, I just didn't understand it. I mean, they, it's like we were spending the money.
They don't understand.
And, and you wanna get on there and say something, but it's like, what do you say? But at any rate, I'm, I'm glad these folks are willing to do that, and it's gonna be, be a shot in our, our community, especially the city. But at any rate, uh.
The president, that's why I always say, make it plain and clear where baby can understand. Those people don't even understand what's going on.
And we, we should do something else with the money, if we're not spending any money. It's like, oh, traffic jams or something, I don't know, it's, it was, it was just, but anyway, I'm just, I'm just glad they're coming, and, and I appreciate everybody coming out, and, and I apologize to all of y'all individually for not mentioning y'all being there when I was speaking, but you know that speaking is not my thing, and, and, and I don't think it ever will be, to be honest with you, but, uh, I even, even admitted to a crime while I was there. But I was, I was ten at the time, in my defense. Um, I, I think everything's been covered pretty much. I think what we need to do now is, uh, that concludes my reporting, and. Need to make a motion.
Close the term.
Close the termination.
So move.
All right. That's in second motion, Mr. Gaines. All in favor?
Uh.
Motion for close of the term.